... the City of San Carlos, successor agency to the redevelopment agency meeting of October 28th, 2013. The first item on the agenda is changes to the order of agenda. Are there any changes to the order of agenda?
I had a couple of things I was going to-
Is your mic on?
Nowadays.
Yeah.
If we pull things off the consent calendar, are we going to have to- if this- I don't know how late we really are going to go tonight, but-
We're not going to go that late.
Okay.
Because we have a closed session after this.
All right, so we can- very good. So if we pull something off the consent calendar-
We'll go at the end.
We'll just take it at the end.
Right.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, anything else on that? Move- or any report from closed session? I don't think there was, because we didn't have one yet, so, okay. Counsel's Communications and Announcements, Ms. Clapper?
Yes, I have a couple of items. This coming Friday is going to be a fairly busy one with the preview with the Friends of the Library, and on Saturday with the opening of the library. And Friday is also Housing Leadership Day, being sponsored by the Housing Leadership Council, which I'm looking forward to attending. I also just wanted to let folks know about a couple of things that I went to that I thought were quite interesting. San Carlos resident Sam Hertzberg was a featured speaker at the Active San Mateo Conference that was sponsored by Carol Groom earlier this month. And in his role as County Parks Planner, he presented a slideshow with examples of projects to maintain and preserve the 186 miles of trails in the county. It was very well done. And earlier this week, I went to- not this week, last week, I went to the Connect 13 event that was sponsored by Warren Slocum and Kevin Mullen, looking at options for how we can strengthen our communities using social media. And it was very nice to see that our past Assistant City Manager, Brian Mora, was honored with the First Annual Connect Award for being a leader in this area.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the- it's called the SAL Dinner, that's a Sheriff's Activities League on the 17th, and it was a great evening, a lot of law enforcement and local elected officials there honoring youth and the many activities that they engage in. It's a great organization, I was happy to take part in it. Also attended what he called a coffee with Kevin, which was really just a little meeting with Kevin Mullen at our depot last Thursday. And I just briefed him on our latest happenings in San Carlos, and so here he was again today, sitting right here. He said he'd never been in the council chambers, but he's visited our town a lot lately. And then also, as part of my heart board duties, I attended the Affordable Housing Loan Program Committee meeting back on the 15th. And that committee actually approves Hart's participation in affordable housing loans for all kinds of projects. This particular one was in East Palo Alto for a senior housing rehabilitation project. And it's a very worthwhile program, and I'm happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
Well, the only thing I was supposed to go to is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting where we looked at the projects. I had mentioned that before at the council meeting prior, and we did have a planning application, but because we had the forum Thursday night, it was in conflict, and I didn't go. So I don't know if our staff knows if we did get awarded a- no, we didn't get a grant? Or we don't know? Okay. So that was the only thing. And then today, I was here for the hearing that Senator Hill and Mr. Mullen had for the PG&E item. And I saw- I know Karen was here, and Ron, and Mr. Olbert spoke, actually, at some point. But I thought it was a worthwhile hearing. It was nice to get all sides of the story, if you will, because, you know, obviously the different cities spoke, PG&E had a chance to speak, and somebody from the CPUC. But I really appreciated Mr. Hill's approach, and the way he asked his questions and dug into things. I thought he was very fair, and it was obvious he was trying to get after a better way to get information, have information flow back and forth between the cities, not just our city, but all over the state, and utilities like PG&E. So I thought it was a worthwhile hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I attended a South Bay Waste- South Bayside Waste Management Authority Board meeting. That's the group of elected officials that oversees our trash collection and recycling. Couple of things happened there. One is, there was a motion brought forward to increase the compensation for the Executive Director. I actually voted against that. It was one of the two organizations who did. I did that primarily because the recommended increase in compensation of 3.5% was above what we typically have been able to afford for our staff. And on top of that, to the best of anybody's knowledge at the meeting, the SBWMA staff, including the Executive Director, hadn't really had to experience any kind of give-back over the last few years during the Great Recession. So I just felt that that was a little bit reaching. If- and by the way, these comments here, if there are any things that my colleagues would like to provide an alternative point of view, and perhaps give me guidance on how you'd like to see us represent the city's interests at those meetings, please ask staff to agendize it so we can actually come back and discuss that, because I'd be very interested in your input. The biggest issue actually had to do with whether or not to authorize South Bayside Recycling, the folks who operate the transfer station, to utilize contract workers in the event of a work action taken by their bargaining unit against them. There was a strike vote taken by that bargaining unit, and they did authorize going on strike if their negotiating team felt that was necessary. It was pretty clear to me, after listening to a bunch of testimony and comment, that it was primarily being used as a way of indicating to management that all of the give-backs that were being proposed were just excessive. What the board finally ended up deciding to do is we did not vote on that motion. Instead, what we did is we decided to meet again in a special meeting in mid-November after the next couple of rounds of negotiations take place between South Bayside Recycling and their bargaining unit, and revisit the issue. My expectation is, and the approach that I'm planning on taking again unless people want to propose something else, in which case we should put it on the next agenda to discuss, is I definitely understand and believe that we can't afford a risk to public health and safety if trash isn't being collected. But until such time as there actually is a strike in action, not a vote to authorize one, but an actual walkout, I would not support actually endorsing the use of contract workers. And partly that's driven by the fact that we can meet on 24 hours' notice, basically, and take action if we need to. And South Bayside Recycling indicated they can fully staff the facility within 24 hours if they need to.
Mr. Olbert, I apologize, but could you be a little more specific? You said "trash pickup," and that has nothing to do, I don't believe, with what you're speaking about. You said picking up trash. It has- it's not the pickup of trash. It's not- it's not the recology folks, it's the other guys. I believe you misspoke.
No, actually, I simplified.
But let's be specific. It has nothing to do with the pickup of the trash, it has everything to do with the transfer station.
And if the trash cannot be delivered to the transfer station, then recology will not necessarily pick it up?
I don't know that, but I'm just saying, it's not the recology side, it's the South Bayside. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
That's fair. I appreciate the clarification. I think I was saying South Bayside Recycling every time I mention it.
But you said "pickup" of trash, and that's not necessarily-
I'm afraid I don't understand your point. Maybe you can clarify for me?
I'm just saying, it has nothing to do- it's not the recology side of the issue that's under discussion here, it's the folks at the transfer station. So if recology workers wanted to, they theoretically pick up the trash. They might not have anywhere to go with it, but they can pick it up.
Mr. Mayor, this is just- I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is on a council report item, and I just want to make sure that we stick to that subject matter.
I'm just trying to identify the issue that I thought you misspoke.
I understand, but I just want to make sure we- because of the nature of this item, I think we want to keep-
Fine, I got it, okay.
Actually, let me suggest that, and I'll finish up here in a minute. It's a complicated issue, so I apologize for taking some time. Maybe we should put this on the next agenda, just so we can more fully discuss it, and I won't feel like I'm trying to jam a bunch of stuff and simplify it into a short period of time. So, in any event, my expectation, my process would be, unless there is an actual work stoppage at the transfer station, that I would not look to authorize the use of contract workers at the transfer station. And again, if people feel differently about that, we should definitely talk about that, because I want to get the feedback. Moving on to a less complex issue, I went- I attended the Senator Hill and Assemblymember Mullen hearing as well. Like Mr. Grocott said, I thought it was an excellent, excellent hearing. And I want to particularly commend everybody who is on the public agency panel, but in particular, Mr. Malpe, who I think did an outstanding job of clearly explaining the city's interests and concerns. And I will just also note in passing that I was very impressed when public comment came around, that PG&E's PR system had done an outstanding job. There were just person after person after person who, in many cases, had driven for hours in order to stand up there for two minutes and say, "What a wonderful organization PG&E is." And don't get me wrong, there's actually a lot of things they do great. I think, as the hearing pointed out, there's a lot of things that are fairly critical that we'd like them to do better at. But nonetheless, I was very impressed with the conduct of their PR machine.
Okay, thank you. I also attended the Sheriff's Activities League Dinner that Mr. Collins indicated that he had been at. And I did not, however, today, attend the Senator Hill hearing due to a personal commitment that was set up, quite honestly, two or three months ago. So I just want to make sure that I wasn't boycotting the meeting, but just wasn't able to attend today due to a personal commitment. Okay, moving on, item four, public comment. This is for items that are not on the posted agenda. I have three speaker cards for that right now. If there's any other speaker cards for items not on the posted agenda, please hand them up. The first one is- Mr. Carpio? You're up.
First, the machine doesn't work anymore.
Okay.
Needs some maintenance. I want to make comment about the project, the Caltrain project. I've gained experience in this type of project with Berkeley and Amreville, and I don't see on the project any-
Mr. Carpio, you can't speak about the project, because that's on the agenda. If there's something else you'd like to speak about, that's fine, but the project itself has to be- you have to speak on the agenda item. So it has to be not on the posted agenda tonight, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I can't hear what you say. I'm just guessing.
Sure.
That's okay, you don't want me to speak now?
You cannot speak on this item at this time. You can speak on it at another time, but this is for items not on the posted agenda.
Sorry, that doesn't-
That's okay. Can you understand- do you understand what I'm saying? Can someone please get closer to his ear, perhaps, and explain what I'm trying to do?
Mr. Carpio? The Caltrain item is later on the agenda.
Oh, today, later?
Later this evening.
About what time?
Maybe fairly late.
Could be a couple of hours.
Oh, no, I have to go.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Carpio. I apologize, but we have to keep that together. The next speaker card I have is Jeff Rangel. And you're limited to two minutes, Mr. Rangel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. My name is Jeff Rangel, I'm the Director of Corporate Affairs at Brocade, and I'm delighted to announce and invite you today to participate in the Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot Thanksgiving Morning in Downtown San Jose. It's an annual event, 5K run-walk, 10K run. It benefits four organizations, one of which you'll hear about in just a minute. The Turkey Trot has, over its last eight years, generated $3 million for community benefit. It's a great opportunity to come out and have some fun and excitement. There's a number of races within a race, including a Kids Fun Run, a fastest cop- fastest firefighter, quickest cop competition, and a costume competition. So lots of great activity happening in Downtown San Jose Thanksgiving Morning, which we encourage you to come out and participate in. Most specifically, I want to encourage you to participate in the Brocade Mayor's Cup. We believe really in the value of public-private partnerships, and I've been out visiting council members. You've received already an email with the leaderboard that indicates the various council members and mayors, planning commissions, and city managers who are participating in the trot. We're hoping to have more than 70 elected officials come out to participate Thanksgiving Morning. If you, based on the points possible that you achieve, you might have the opportunity to win the Mayor's Cup and display that proudly in your lobby. You participate with other smaller cities. Saratoga, as an example, has actually won this trophy for the last three years. They're eager to get it again, but perhaps you can register and participate. One last reminder, for those who do register and attend the event Thanksgiving Morning, you can participate and visit with others at the VIP tent, where you can meet other elected officials, other community and business leaders, Thanksgiving Morning. Again, a great event that I've participated in several years. My whole family comes out, and I encourage you to do the same. Several hundred folks from San Carlos come and participate because there is direct benefit to the City of San Carlos through the work that the Second Harvest Food Bank of San Mateo and Santa Clara County are doing, as well as other beneficiaries. And one of the speakers following me will speak briefly to the work that Second Harvest is doing. I do have some brochures and flyers that I'll leave with the city clerk, and again, encourage you to participate and see future leader boards from me on that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Sorry, I misspoke your name. The next speaker card I have is Kayla Haley.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for letting me be here tonight. My name is Kayla Haley, and I'm with Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. As Mr. Rangel said from Brocade, I'm involved in the Silicon Valley Applied Materials Turkey Trot. Our involvement is simple. The Turkey Trot is more than a race, it's a community celebration that benefits four great local charities, serving our citizens. So you heard from Brocade about the Mayor's Cup, and let me share with you my perspective as to why you should be involved. The Turkey Trot is not only a fun family event, but it provides much-needed funding to organizations like Second Harvest Food Bank, to help people in our communities. All of the race beneficiaries help individuals, families, seniors, and children improve their lives and the prosperity of our community. At Second Harvest, our mission is to provide a basic necessity, food, to people in need. We serve 1 in 10 people in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties, and that's over 250,000 people per month. Our San Mateo County office is actually located right here in San Carlos, over on Bing Street. And in San Mateo County, we work with over 130 community and nonprofit partners to distribute food to hungry people at over 300 sites. The money raised by the Turkey Trot will help us provide meals for over 550,000 people. We look forward to seeing you Thanksgiving Morning for the Ninth Annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. We hope you can join us, and we hope you bring your friends and family as well.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment on items not on the posted agenda? Okay. Moving on, item five- excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Fuller, I thought it was on the Transit Village.
No, no, no. It's totally unrelated, and you will see that.
I apologize, I couldn't read what it said, I just assumed, I apologize. Go ahead.
Just wanted to report to Counsel about a pretty exciting public-private partnership that we have going on the greater east side with the owners of the 711 building. After many years of it sort of becoming- we were talking about garbage earlier, Mr. Olbert was talking about garbage. I feel like that may have been the garbage capital of San Carlos. Cigarette butts were everywhere, garbage was everywhere. We approached the building owner, and after numerous sort of unsuccessful attempts, we actually brought in contractors to clean up that facility. And if you notice now, the- what was the eyesore of all of San Carlos is nicely landscaped, there's no cigarette butts everywhere. It's a huge upgrade to our city, and basically the entryway of our city, that we're really excited about. So we wanted to thank Raj Chabra, the owner of 711. We wanted to also say that this is a great example of the type of public-private partnerships that we want to have on the east side, and we all know the story of the 65-foot sign of In-N-Out, and how maybe that wasn't the best negotiation by our city, and we could have got something better. We want to get better stuff for our city in all these types of negotiations. And I would be remiss not to mention that on my walk over here tonight, I encountered just an extreme blizzard of garbage, right outside of Sam Trans, Caltrain, and on Old County Road. And it's not related to this project, it's just garbage that's there. There's a very bad wind current on our side of the berm, and if the squeaky oil gets the grease, I'd like to hear about it, because this is not the first time I brought this up. This is probably the thousandth time I brought this up. And I wish that we were more competent as a city and/or that Caltrain was- I don't understand, why can't this garbage be cleaned up? And I'm not directing at anyone personally. You know I love all you guys, including the guys right here and the guys right here. It's just, we got to find a way to make- bring some pride back to San Carlos. I mean, we're living in an urban blight. This is a slum-like condition. Please, help us clean this up, and I don't know what the answer is, but I just want to bring it to everyone's attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Apologize again for not calling you up on this one. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment? All right, seeing none, moving on to item five, approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate actions. So is there any item that needs to be moved on, or move- or should I say removed?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to pull items E and F.
E and F, okay. Any other items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the other items.
I move that we approve consent calendar items A, B, C, D, and G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and to approve items A, B, C, D, and G on the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes, we'll be taking up those items at the end of the meeting. Okay, that Mr. Grocott asked to be pulled. The next item is item six, reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. Their informational nature, no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. And item 6A is update on condition of PG&E natural gas line 147.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As promised, bringing back this PG&E item on each of our agendas for a quick update. A few things have happened since the last meeting. Last Monday, an administrative law judge, as part of the current CPUC proceedings on line 147, issued an order allowing PG&E to open line 147 and operate it at the reduced pressure of 125 pounds per square inch. To date, my understanding is PG&E has kept line 147 shut in, it's not currently flowing gas. My understanding is they're studying line 147, they're putting together a plan, and when they have one, they will communicate that to us prior to opening the line back up, so we can let our residents know. In addition, a few other things have happened. At that same hearing last week, the administrative law judge set several hearing dates, beginning November 18th, where we'll have an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses as part of that process in San Francisco. The judge expects to issue a tentative ruling on November 22nd. That tentative ruling would then be heard by the CPC Commission on December 5th. The ruling could be approved or amended by the commission at that time. In addition, the city has hired the law firm of Myers-Nave to represent us in these proceedings. We have also hired a technical expert, Dr. Glenn Stevic, mechanical engineer, who is with UC Berkeley, to be our technical expert. We're shipping off all the records to Dr. Stevic this week, so he can begin his review and prepare a report in anticipation of that November 18 hearing date. In addition, we filed a petition last Thursday with the CPUC, appealing, not so much appealing, but making our request to have line 147 remain shut down. Originally, when we filed with the CPC the previous week to be an interested party, those two filings, to become an interested party and to keep the line shut down, were incorporated into one filing, and CPC recommended that we break those into two different filings, which is why we made that second filing to keep the line shut down last week. We felt it important that that be on the record as what the city would like to see happen with this line while it's being investigated. In addition to that, we filed to be reimbursed for our costs associated with hiring attorneys and technical experts to assist us during the CPC investigation. No surprise, the PG&E is opposing both of our petitions to have the line shut down and to recover our costs associated with participating in this investigation. That's the update I have for you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Malpe? Okay. Yes, Mr. Olbert?
Just a quick question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Malpe, can you tell us a little bit more about the expert that we've hired, the experts that we've hired?
Yeah, the law firm of Myers-Nave has been representing the city of San Bruno for the last three years, so they've developed a great deal of expertise in working with PG&E on these pipeline issues and the CPUC. And we felt that they were the perfect law firm to represent us, and that they were very much up to speed, in fact, much more up to speed than we are at the staff level on this issue. So we're hitting the ground running. This is a very fast-moving proceeding, and so I think we get quite a bit of bang for our buck in working with Myers-Nave. Dr. Stevic was recommended to us by another PhD from Cal Berkeley, a Dr. Bea, that you've probably, if you've read on the issue, has been involved in this pipeline issue since the San Bruno explosion is- comes highly recommended. He recommended Dr. Stevic for us, who's been working on these issues. He has over 25 years' experience in failure analysis and design of structures. He's a PhD in mechanical engineering from UC Berkeley, has a master's in mechanical engineering from UC Berkeley, and a BS in mechanical engineering from Michigan Technology Institute. So he'll be working with us to provide some analysis and review of the records and testing data that PG&E is providing.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, I have a speaker card. Is that allowed?
It's a posted agenda item, so we can have a speaker on this.
We can?
Yes.
Okay. I have a speaker card, Poppy Agambelin, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Poppy Agambelin, I'm a Corporate Affairs Director at PG&E. Tonight, we wanted to provide you, the council, and the members of the public, a brief update on the PG&E work involving line 147 in San Carlos. The city manager is absolutely correct, the line remains shut in, but we are planning to do some work and wanted to share that with you. PG&E will conduct an excavation and an inspection project near the intersection of Britton Avenue and Dayton Avenue. The project will involve excavating a 7-foot by 8-foot area to inspect the pipeline and verify the accuracy of our records for that segment, and then backfilling the area and ensuring we restore it to the current condition. During the excavation, there will be approximately three large trucks and excavating equipment in the area. Due to the movement of the trucks throughout the excavation, inspection, and backfilling period, we will have traffic impacts. The work is expected to last approximately four days, although weather and other factors affecting safe working conditions will dictate our ability to stay on schedule. The work was planned to commence on November 4th. However, we will be commencing the work on November 11th, due to a no-touch policy that we have. We have two line clearances, essentially line 132, which we plan to clear out to do some other work throughout the rest of the peninsula. And of course, with line 147 being shut in, we don't want to compromise the rest of the gas system, so we're going to wait until that line clearance commences and finishes on line 132, and then conduct the inspection work. On October 3rd, we provided city staff with an overview of the project. At that time, we submitted draft permit, application for comment by the city, and since have received an approved permit for the work. And of course, with this move, we will continue to work with city staff to ensure that we adhere to the conditions that the city has asked of us to adhere to on the permits. Lastly, I just wanted to share that we were able- Lastly, I just wanted to share that we were able to reach out to over 430 customers in the area about the project, specifically potential traffic impacts. We also canvassed in the immediate area to ensure that each of those residents had a personal contact with PG&E to ask questions and have conversation about the work and what they can expect. We've also shared this information with city staff. Once the project is complete, we will share the findings with the city, the council, and the CPUC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gillan. Okay, moving on. Item seven, public hearing, San Carlos Transit Village Plan Development. Consideration and recommendations from the San Carlos Planning Commission regarding the approval/adoption of one CEQA findings, California Environmental Quality Act findings, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and a Plan Development PD Plan and accompanying zoning map amendment to rezone the railroad corridor, the PD site, generally bounded by El Camino Real to the west, the Caltrain tracks to the east, the northern boundary of Assessor's Parcel Number 50-055-020 on the north, and the city's municipal boundaries on the south from mixed-use station area MU-SA zoning district and Mixed Use South Boulevard MU-SB zoning district to Plan Development PD zoning district. Okay, so we were speaking earlier, we had some reports, and I think we're into, at this point, some questions. Before we start that, I want to announce that we will be stopping talking about the planet... this transit village at 10:30. So I don't know how many... how long we're going to have questions. Hopefully, it'll be an hour, hour and a half, and there'll be plenty of time for folks to give testimony tonight, or if they want... rather, public to speak. But I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that if they can't speak tonight, we will be having another meeting, I'm sure, on the 12th of November, and they're certainly going to be allowed to speak that night. But I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that we will be cutting it off at around 10:30 because we have a closed session tonight, among other things to work on. So I want to make sure that folks don't think that if they wait around long enough, they're going to speak, and they may or may not. It depends on how many questions we have and how many things we talk about. So I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, okay? All right, questions, I guess? So, Ms. Clapper, questions?
Yes, I was wondering if we were going to get some additional information from Councilmember Obert regarding your presentation.
What were you thinking of?
Well, I didn't quite understand the different variables that you were working with that resulted in the conclusions, and I thought maybe that there was a, like, next piece to your presentation of how that came about in comparison to...
There's a... there are a fair number of assumptions in the model. It would probably take a while to go through them all. I would be happy to... assuming the city attorney is okay with this, I would be happy to provide that to everybody and make it a public document. I mean, I'm not trying to withhold information from you. If there are some specific things, I'd be happy to address them. I mean, to me, the major issues have to do with the cost of the land, and the appreciation and value of the land, okay?
So, let me just interrupt for a moment. So those are the... those are two assumptions that you think are different than from... than how it was probably previously analyzed?
Correct.
Is that what's...
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then there are probably the other major class of things is, it's not clear to me that some of the earlier, let me call them sensitivity analyses necessarily scaled some of the costs and whatnot appropriately. You know, as the project size shrinks, fees go down, construction costs go down, that type of thing. And if you don't adjust for that, you can end up making it look like the project has to be really, really large. But the single biggest thing is probably looking at the... integrating the value of the land into it and therefore being able to eliminate the ground lease and say, the ground lease is really the way in which the two parties choose to share the value between the two of them, okay? And in that sense, it's not really any of our business.
If I could interrupt, if Mr. Obert would provide that item to us, and I'm sure he will, I think that would be great if we could all look at it. Because quite honestly, it was a fairly quick presentation.
Right.
There'll be plenty of time to ask those questions in the next meeting.
Right, well, yeah, that would be great if we can be provided with it. I think that would be extremely helpful.
If you could do that, that'd be great. Because otherwise, we're going to...
Oh, yeah, I don't want to get into that level of detail right now.
I understand. I was just trying to push it...
I'm assuming it will be mentioned later this evening, and I want to be able to put it in a context.
We will have plenty of time on the 12th, or whenever, to talk about that, so. But other questions you might have on presentations, or the staff report, or any other items? And you can come... I'll come back to you.
I have a long list of...
Okay.
If we're getting to that point of questions for...
Questions for everybody and anybody.
Okay, so we're doing all of our questions now before we do public comment? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, before we begin, I just... can I ask one question?
Sure.
Given that Mr. Obert made this presentation tonight, would it be appropriate to ask staff to take a look at it and sort of integrate it in a comparison with RSG analytics? And I don't know if it needs to be incorporated, but I would like to see an evaluation of it and maybe have another set of eyes look at it. Not that I don't trust you, Mr. Obert, I think you spent a lot of time on it, and obviously your study of it is very thorough, but I'd like to see, you know, someone else's take on it and see what value it may be of great value to us, but I think I'd like to see a little bit more evaluation of it. I think it ought to be considered, so. I wonder if we could do that.
Go ahead, Mr. Obert, yeah.
I think that's a great idea, and so my colleagues understand, I don't take any offense at people challenging that. That's essentially the same point I made to the mayor when we were dealing with trash rates on the fly, okay? And just so you're aware, besides being in close consultation with RSG, our consultants, as I was working through this, I have also shared it with the staff. I only started doing that today because it obviously was being developed over the weekend. And I fully support your request, and in fact, we have some meetings scheduled with RSG by phone and with staff to go through it, because I think it is important. I don't pretend to be... I don't pretend to be an expert on development economics, so I'd be happy to see that done.
Okay, that's good. Why don't we do this, Ms. Clapper? Why don't you ask three... why don't we do this instead of... because I'm sure all of us have a number of questions, and you might take a half an hour, 45 minutes, or an hour just by yourself, or we all might do that. So why don't you ask three questions, and we'll just do three questions, three questions, and we'll just keep going along, and so everybody will get a chance to ask questions, and then we'll come back, so everybody will be able to exhaust their list. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, it sounds like we're moving to the public hearing item and kind of moving away from the study session. I just wanted to...
I'm sorry, I announced the public hearing. Was we supposed to open the public hearing?
I just thought that... I just want to make it clear for the record that you've moved away from the study session, because I was thinking you were talking about that. Maybe I'm mistaken, what was...
I just announced 7A, so I just assumed that took care of it. I'm sorry, if it... what else do I need to do?
What you just did is fine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I just... I announced it, so I figured we moved right on.
And then I had one other comment, just because of the nature of this item. Just, we have a... the code of conduct requires you to announce any ex-party communications you've had on the item. You don't have to do that necessarily tonight, but it's appropriate for you to make those types of disclosures before you consider the item.
Okay. Do you want to do it tonight, ladies and gentlemen, or do you want to do it later? Let's do it right now. Go ahead.
Okay, I have spoken with Sam Trans, with Mark Simon, and Brian Fitzpatrick regarding this project, and as well as some of the folks from the greater east side neighborhood. So that's the limit of my discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I've spoken with Scott Marsters, Ben Fuller, Dimitri Vandellus, Mark Simon, and Jeff Bird, and Jess Couch.
Okay, Mr. Grocott?
The people I've talked to regarding this project are not the applicant, not Sam Trans. I see this fellow walking past the coffee shop every morning, but we don't really talk about the project. I've talked to some of the folks on the east side, like Ben Fuller, primarily, I think, in terms of our candidates for him, and maybe a few other times, but other than that, people at the plantation, that's about it.
Okay, Mr. Albert?
Let's see, in the last week, I've spoken to Dimitri Vandellus, Ben Fuller, Sam Hurstberg, as I mentioned, a number of conversations with Jim... is it Stanson? Stanson from RSG? Simon, sorry, from RSG, and I believe that's it.
Okay, I have spoken in the last couple of weeks with Mark Simon, and Ben Fuller, and Sam Hurstberg, and Dimitri Vandellus, and also the folks from Legacy. And I believe that covers it. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I assume we do not have to repeat that at the next meeting or the next meeting after that?
You do not have to repeat, unless there are new...
Unless there's new people that we've talked with.
People that you've talked with.
Gotcha, okay, good. All right, why don't we get started with a few questions, three questions, and we'll go marching down the road here.
Okay. Majority of my questions are focusing on the transit part of the Transit Village and how we can maximize that aspect of it. So I didn't see anything in the staff report regarding any conditions requiring transit passes for any of the commercial and retail spaces, so I didn't know if there was any way in which that could be encouraged for those employees. Also, if there was going to be any space in any of the parking areas, either above ground or below ground, for a Zipcar-type service. And I was concerned about the location for the disabled parking, where that was going to be, as well as the specific parking for the Depot Cafe. So those are my three target areas right now.
Staff, could you answer those?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I think just as a point of clarification, what I'll do is I'll direct traffic and communications. There may be different individuals from different groups that would best be able to answer some of the questions, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
I want to answer the first one.
Okay, so the... one of the questions was about transit passes. Part of what is before you is the proposed transportation demand management program that is included in the plan development. Part of what you have a chance to approve or comment on or change is that. So your suggestion about, we'd like to see a different mix or more, is part of what you can do as part of your deliberations. I just would point out that right now, their submittal complies with the city's ordinances in terms of meeting the number of points and to do 20% traffic reduction. Again, we're doing a plan development, so there is an opportunity, as part of your deliberations, to look at whether there should be additional requirements, and that would be something I... you might want to ask the applicant and see what their response is.
And just to clarify, on passes, I think those were primarily focused on the residents as opposed to the employees, but... and I think there may have been 100, up to 100, offered to residents who wanted them, but we didn't talk much about the commercial, retail, or office space. Then your second question was about the... if there was a dedicated car sharing. I know you mentioned Zipcar, but we called it car sharing in the conditions of approval. And there is a condition on page 16 of the conditions that said that three parking spaces, spaces in the multimodal station would be dedicated to car sharing, like Zipcar or some other model.
The other question you had had to do with parking for the restaurant in the Depot. There will be short-term parking in the northern part of the commuter lot that would be available for that. There is also some on-street parking in the area. There is no parking specifically set aside for the Depot. And I believe you had a fourth question, or there was another component? Yes, disabled parking. The disabled parking, they will have to be in compliance with California's requirements in terms of the maximum distance. The area nearest the transit center is being focused on transit operations, the buses and those sorts of things, but there is some parking in that area, and perhaps that's something that when we have the applicant responding, they can... they could perhaps address it. But through the design review process and part of the building permit, they will have to comply with California Building Code requirements, having to do with meeting accessibility. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Grocott, about three of our questions you might have?
Okay.
Start off.
The first one I had was, I noticed throughout in the drawings that it referenced the four-foot height allowed for sloped roofs and parapets, and if you could just... if staff or somebody could comment on why that's on the drawings, is that somewhere in our ordinances, or where does that come from, that language? Whoever.
It is... it is specific in our ordinance, and it was a change from when the project first came in, but we allow, I mean, as opposed to... for that specific roof type, the sloped roofs, there is an additional four feet of height to accommodate that, and that is specific in our ordinance, or zoning ordinance.
You mentioned a change, what... can you speak about that?
From when this project got started, we adopted a new zoning ordinance in 2011. So how we measured height has changed a little bit.
So that language is a result of the change that was made in 2011, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
That gives this allowance?
Correct.
Okay.
Before that, the height was measured to the average of the roof ridge and the top of wall plate. So I'm not sure that there's much difference, but it's a different way in which we measure height.
Okay. Sticking with that a little bit, was there... has there been an actual survey done of this site to determine elevations of land and change of elevation over the site, distance from one end to the other? In order to... you know, there's things shown on the plans, or excuse me, on the elevations, showing, you know, this is 50 feet above closest adjacent grade, but I didn't see anything in what we were given that indicates there is any way to set that datum point.
The last set of... the last set of plans in the drawing at the end are civil engineering drawings, which do have existing grades, also have the proposed finished slab grades for the garage, and then the finished floor grades above that. So you'd have to go to those drawings in order to look at what is the grade changes across the site, as well as what is the proposed project grading and the heights of the building paths.
Okay, I just didn't get that far back into it. I have some questions that are coupled, so I'll just pass in.
Okay, you got a chance. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few. I read an op-ed piece in a paper over the weekend that made several statements, and I just thought it might be a good idea to get some clarification on those. The first question is, are we eliminating the right-hand turn lanes from northbound El Camino onto Holly? The second would be, are we trying to implement more than 130% of the ABAG-mended housing for San Carlos? And I wonder if that is ABAG-mended affordable housing. I'm not clear on that, and I was hoping maybe you could clarify that. And then the next one is, will the fees paid by the developer approximate any property tax revenues that we might get from a private owner? And if not, are they somehow replaced? I have more, but I don't want to just load you up, so stop right there.
Okay, I think the first question had to do with turns from El Camino Real to Holly. There is an improvement measure. It's not required to mitigate any significant impact, but it was identified as something that could improve pedestrian mobility at that intersection, which recommended... there are currently two right-turn lanes from northbound El Camino Real to Holly, and recommends eliminating one of those. And the second one would be to eliminate the left turn from northbound El Camino Real onto Holly. And the... that would allow some changes in the signal timing, as well as to avoid the issue of people who are watching to make a turning... to make a turning motion and sometimes don't see pedestrians. So that is included as a condition of approval, and again, it could be modified as part of your deliberations. The second question you had had to do with the fair share numbers from ABAG, I believe. The numbers that they provide us is our suggested minimum, and our obligation under state law as a city is that we have to demonstrate we have sufficient land that is appropriately zoned and designated to meet, and we have to have strategies in place to meet each of the affordability categories. place to meet each of the affordability categories. This project would exceed the, the amount of housing that has been identified in the above moderate category. But again, we have a housing element which requires us to demonstrate that we can accommodate it, and it sets a minimum. It does not set a maximum. So we aren't, it, it's kind of like apples and oranges. We've demonstrated through the housing element our ability to accommodate those, but we've also, through our general plan and our zoning, said how we'd like to see this piece of land develop and what kinds of densities. We've said up to 50 units to the acre is how we would like to see the development adjacent to the Transit Center. This project complies with that at about a 45 units to the acre. So it's really, it's not that we're trying to change the A-BAG rules or the, the fair share allocation. We have this site that has come before us. It has certain zoning entitlements or zoning designations on it, and the project complies with those. But I think the point from the writer was that we're producing more in this one project than the minimum number of above moderate housing units that are called, that is identified and called for us to demonstrate we can accommodate.
In terms of the tax question, I believe it was a tax question, with regard to whether the, you know, revenues from this project being a semi-public lease project, as opposed to if it was a private development project, and what the differences are in the, in the taxes to the city. We did have RSG take a look at that, and their analysis said that, you know, because this is a long-term lease at 65 years at, or above market, that it would generate essentially the same property taxes as if the project was a private project, about the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the lot coverage percentage for this project?
I need to, I need to ask you a little more about what you're looking at. The requirement is that at least 40 percent of this must be maintained as landscaping, but it depends whether we're including sidewalks, pavement, building coverage. I'm not quite sure.
Let me, let me see if I can clarify it this way. What would the number be applying the same standard that we would use for residential home construction?
Okay.
May take a little bit of time. Perhaps we could get back to that? We can come back to that or provide it offline, you know, I mean, to some meeting. Related to that, I don't-
Oh. Mr. Mayor, I think we do have-
The regulation under the mixed-use station area is not done by coverage. It's done by floor-area ratio, which is that, a ratio of one means that if you had a lot of 1,000 square feet, you could build 1,000 square feet of building on that lot. The permitted development is 2.5, so a ratio of 2.5 square feet for every one square foot of site. The, the FARs are well under that limit. They are around-
I'm sorry. I don't know what FAR means.
Floor-area ratio, I'm sorry. So it's that, they're basically, the development is generally around 1.5 square feet of development for every square foot of site area.
I, I, and if it, if we have to come back with the answer either later tonight or at our next meeting, that's fine. I actually like to have it in terms of lot coverage percent.
Certainly.
Because, because what I'm looking at, as you'll see from this question and the next one, is I want to see how much of the dirt is being covered. So-
So just, just to clarify, it's the footprint of the building when you say?
Whatever standard we would apply on a residential home construction project, which I think that's, that's what it is, the building. Maybe some ancillary stuff related to it, I don't know. Related to that, and I don't know if, if this is a classic metric in architecture, so let me use the term and then explain it. I'm interested in what I think of as the linear coverage. You know, imagine somebody walking along El Camino Real on the sidewalk, and they're looking to the east, because they're walking north. And they're keeping track of each foot of forward progress that they're making past this project. How, how much of, what percentage of the time are they going to be looking at a building? It kind of gets into what the total sight line and openings are. I suspect that's not something you probably have to hand, which is fine. But I'd like to know that, and I'd actually like to know it both on kind of a, the first floor and a second floor basis. I'm trying to, again, get a sense of visual mass looking at it. And I think, while it's only two questions, those are fairly complicated, so I'll pass the baton to somebody else. We'll come back to my stuff later.
Okay.
I just had a question on page 11 of the ordinance, paragraph, or item 15, in the third line, it says that the developer shall plant, maintain, et cetera, et cetera, eastside berm to the west of the county road for a period of 25 years. And then, and under C, it says the developer shall responsible to fund maintenance of the trees planted on the berm for a period of five years. So I'm confused.
Page 11 must be a typo.
Page 11.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's probably a typo. The planning commission, it was first recommended as a five-year time period, and the planning commission changed that to 25 years, and that's what it should be.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the ordinance, if and when, if and when it's approved, if, that's if and when-
Thank you.
Is consistent. And the other question I had, sort of dovetails with Mr. Collins', is question about the northbound, the two northbound lanes. And I certainly appreciate the comment that certainly it would be pedestrian, more pedestrian-friendly. Has anyone looked at what's going to happen to the traffic there? Because I drive that every day. And with only one lane, has someone looked at how far back up that, that line of traffic's going to be? If even people will be able to turn left off of San Carlos Avenue at 8:30 in the morning?
Left off of San Carlos? I'd have to review the traffic studies, but I'd be happy to take a look at that and get back to you. But I believe it has to-
Could you do that? Because I certainly understand why it might have been taken out, but I just wanted to see if there was a counterbalance on what they thought would happen to the traffic. I have my own opinion, but I won't, which I think I might have said already. All right. Thanks. I just had a couple of questions. Ms. Clapper?
Yes. Okay. Wanted to, I didn't see anything in the staff report about parking being unbundled. Is that, I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more about what the options are for doing that, and about electric charging stations, not only for residential use, but in the Caltrain parking lot and the multimodal station, as well as being available in the retail, commercial parking areas. Those are my two questions for right now, because I actually used four the last time, so I'm, I'm dunning myself one question.
Mr. Mayor, to answer that, the first question with regard to unbundled parking is, the, the planning commission did have a fairly extensive discussion about unbundled parking. It's not something that the city of San Carlos requires. It's something that is offered by our ordinance and our TDM plan. If the applicant wants to do unbundled parking, then they would have to go through a minor use permit to do it, and tell us how they were going to do it, how they intended to do it. There was an extensive dialogue between the developer and the planning commission about it. It hasn't been used a whole lot in San Mateo County. We understand that some cities are looking at, in some development projects, perhaps in Redwood City, maybe one other city in San Mateo County is currently looking at doing that. But it's something that I know that the Sierra Club had mentioned in their letter to the city council as, as being of interest. And I think that it would warrant some discussion with the developer and how they, what they thought about it. And in terms of electric charging stations, that was another topic of discussion at the planning commission, a good deal of discussion. And while there are stations provided in, the infrastructure is provided in the residential parking garages underneath the building, it wasn't discussed as part of the SAM Trans parking lot. And that's something that perhaps we could also discuss with SAM Trans.
Just, just to add onto that, as part of the residential, there would be, the cost of the charging would be charged back to the, to the, to the tenant, to the person doing the charging. There's a mechanism for doing that. Whereas in the, the public parking lot, it would require more. Somebody would have to say, I'm going to come and charge and, and get set up to be able to be charged or to, to provide payment for that. So it would be a little more complicated to do it. Somebody could show up and the charging station isn't available. But the charging stations could be provided. The issue of how to set it up for, you know, any member of the public to be able to come and, and charge is, would take a little more thinking through. But it could be something that could be included.
Okay. I would definitely like to hear more about that. If they can do it at the Redwood Shores Library, I think we could work something into this project. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot? Couple of questions, a couple, three questions?
I wanted to get some clarification on process. And the way I'll put it out there is this, you know, my understanding is partly what we're doing is an entitlement process. So I would like to have that explained to me, what, what exactly that is, in, I guess, you know, layman's terms of taking the legalese of it and putting it in layman's terms. And coupled with that, the, the one thing I'm looking at with this is, you know, we hear, at least I've heard, oh, this project fits into our general plan. And yet, our general plan has this as mixed-use station and mixed-use something else. And if, and if it was fitting in directly into our general plan, just plugging into our general plan, I don't think there would be the request for a planned unit development at the site. And, you know, in my, in my business, if I go to an agency and say, I've got this unusual piece of property, a client with an unusual piece of property, and we want to do X, Y, and Z because the property is unusual, and so we're looking for a variance, I have to write a very detailed letter that says, this is the variance we're looking for, this is why, and this is how the variance we're asking for is different from what the zoning code requires otherwise. And that's another thing, when I, when I look at these documents, I don't see what's, what would be allowed if this were being submitted as, under the, the current code, those are zoning ordinance, and what's being asked for that's different than that, and that's why we're looking at planned unit development. Now, you don't, I, I, like some of these other questions, I don't know that you're going to be able to answer that tonight, but that's a question I have, and I think all of us should be interested in that.
First of all, Attachment 5 to the staff report provides a summary of where the project complies with the existing zoning.
Okay.
And where, basically, they're asking for flexibility from the development standards.
Can, can I just interrupt you right, just a little bit, right there?
Sure.
I have to admit, I didn't spend a lot of time reading. I got started reading on this stuff, and then I got to looking at the drawings. And being my background is designing things, I spent a heck of a lot more time getting into these drawings and looking at them in a very detailed fashion. And I figured I would be doing a service to my council if that's what I did, because that's my expertise. Just like Mr. Olbert looked at things in a financial way, I dug into these drawings. And that's where I didn't see the difference. I didn't even look at Attachment 5 to be respectful.
So, and that's fine. It's a lot to take in.
It is.
But on, on the last page of, of that three or four-page attachment, it identifies where specifically the project does not comply with the, the site-specific development standards, such as it doesn't maintain a 15-foot setback. Sometimes a little corner of the building notches down into the 15-foot front yard setback along El Camino. The setbacks of the buildings from Holly Street are less than 10 feet, and part of that is because of the, the radius turn at the corner. The requirement is that the ground floor for residential use in the residential buildings needs to be a minimum of 12 feet, and, which is higher than you would normally have to have for residential. This does not, this project would not comply with that. The ground floor minimum height for commercial is 16, and Building 7 does not comply with that. The allowed setback for surface parking lots from the property line is supposed to be a minimum of 40 feet. Because of the, the shallowness of the property in some places, it doesn't comply with that. Some setbacks of the surface parking from buildings and public plazas is supposed to be eight feet, in some places it's less. And the parking podiums for Buildings 5 and 6 will be six feet above the grade plane instead of a maximum of five. And that has to do with, as it gets shallower, there's less room to take a driveway down at a complying grade, so that the, basically the garage has to come up to meet that shorter distance they have to, to get there. So those are the flexibility and standards. The, we're also permitting residential use on the ground floor, which would otherwise require a use permit. So those are the ways in which they're asking for flexibility in development standards. You, you started off your question saying you weren't sure what we meant by, by entitlements? Is, if I understood the question?
Well, I understand that the two are related and tied in. But you can go ahead and speak to that.
So they're, they're getting a plan development, which is, in essence, kind of like a site-specific set of zoning regulations for this property. If you approve the plan development application, all the rules that are set out in the, in the plan development booklet, which include these kinds of exceptions, and the use standards set on there would basically become the, the criteria against which, when they come in for design review, or as this project has a life, and people come in and say, well, I want to do this kind of a use, we would be going back to site-specific and saying, does this comply or doesn't it comply? In, in the use criteria, basically, we've removed some uses, such as personal service uses, but added some uses, such as residential on the ground floor or childcare center on the ground floor. So the entitlement would be something that's tailored specifically to this site, specifically for this project, and that then becomes what we compare it to in terms of, does it comply? Does it not comply? What are the design standards that it needs to comply with if it was, if the development, the plan development was approved?
And a follow-up question somewhat relates to what Mr. Olbert was talking about with pacing the project, and, you know, how long do you walk along a building face, and when do you get a break? Is, is there anything in the planned unit development that is a variance, if you will, from the mixed-use designation in terms of length of buildings?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
It's, you just, I, I know it's here, just if you can just give me, just bear with me a moment.
Perhaps, Mr.-
Mr. Mayor, we can move on to the next question and circle back around to that.
No problem. I just, you know, I can't flip that fast, but I thought maybe she-
Sure. Mr. Collins? We'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few more. One of the other questions that came up was, what kind of sewer taxes will be paid and who will pay them? That's one. When Legacy was selected as a developer, I believe, was that 2005 or 2004?
I believe it was 2005.
2005, okay. Questions are, how many units were proposed at that time, and how many are planned today? I think I know the answer to the second part of that question. And then the last one, maybe you may have to do some measuring. It's difficult for me to, after going through all the plans, to figure out distances. I didn't, couldn't quite- are planned today? I think I know the answer to the second part of that question. And then the last one, maybe you may have to do some measuring. It's difficult for me to, after going through all the plans, to figure out distances. I couldn't quite calculate that. But my question is, what's the distance from the back of each building to the tracks and then to the east side of Old County Road? I realize that's probably a series of different calculations, but I'm hoping it's in there somewhere. I just couldn't find it.
The first question has to do with sewer taxes. This project will be responsible for paying sewer connection fees. Every project that is built needs to pay for its share of the sewage treatment capacity in the plant. They will be required to pay that. And then, from an operational perspective, they will pay a sewer, a fee for using the sewer, and those would be the same as if there was any other kind of development or project. They'll pay the same-
So they'll just collect those from the renters?
No, no, well, that's between-
I mean, they will through whatever they charge for the rent.
Right. Whether, I think it's unlikely that it'll be an individual unit fee. The connection fee will-
But they'll do a calculation.
...part of the development fees. And then typically sewer would not be, would not be in building by building, but it would be part of, would be factored into the rent.
Right. Thank you.
You asked about what the initial proposal was. My understanding is that when they put in a proposal and went through the process by which they were selected, they initially proposed 319 units. The current development proposal is 280 units with the conditions of approval. And in our discussions with the applicant, the conditions would result in, they believe in the loss of, or the reduction of eight units, so that it would be 272 units.
With regard to the distance setback from the tracks, the residential buildings are a minimum of about 55 feet, but it varies, as you, I think, saw earlier in the site plans. For instance, Building 1 is between 64 and 71 feet, let's say. Building 2, 56 to almost 60 feet. And this is just to, just to give you a comparison, the existing train depot is about 32 to 38 feet away. Building 3, 55 feet minimum, up to 63 feet. Building 4, 56, 57 feet. Building 5, 56 to 57. Building 6, 55, did I say that already? Building 7, 45 to 46 feet. And then Building 8, 57 to 64 feet, approximately.
And he asked also from Old County Road.
And then the second part of that was how far from the east side of Old County Road?
That, we're going to have to come back with you on that one.
It looks like it's pretty, it looks like-
I mean, just an approximate, like an additional 40 feet, 50 feet, 30 feet?
I'd say it's another 40 feet or so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Collins, just as an aside, the material that I was given by RSG, which came from staff, the sewer connection fees themselves are about half a mil.
Thank you.
If you fully bill out the project. If I heard correctly, I believe the plan, the applicants were talking about how the plan shows lower heights for the building, or at least the heights were reduced near Holly Street, relative to perhaps some earlier designs. Whether that's true or not, my question basically is, have we, did we ever look at, do we look at actually having greater heights immediately adjacent to Holly Street? Because that's the, that's the one area where there's limited impact on views, shall I say.
That was part of the initial discussion. I think it was actually, may have come out of discussions with the Greater East San Carlos Association, that there was some idea that perhaps the buildings could go five or even six stories on the north and even south sides of Holly Street, or closer to the commercial areas on Old County as opposed to the residential. And so the architect and developer did go back and kind of take a look at that. And what we were told at that time is, a number of different factors come into play. One is, if you add more units in those locations, you also have to add more parking. And going down below the grade level of the parking garage, you run into other construction issues and perhaps even water infiltration issues, and there's construction costs. And then the construction type may change, which gets into a cost issue as well, going to, from wood to steel at a certain point. And also, the visual impact of going from, again, a 50 or 60-foot height to 70 or 80 feet would be something significantly different in terms of, and that's more of a, sort of the city perspective I'm throwing in here, is it would be a very significant difference in the streetscape along El Camino Real in comparison to some of the other buildings. You do have a couple of buildings on El Camino Real in our community that rise up to the 50, 60-foot height, which would be the 1,001 Laurel Street development. And also, there's an office building right across from Walgreens that's pretty high, but it's shrouded by trees, so you can't really see it. But I think these buildings would then need to go up even higher than that to get to that.
Thank you for that. I have to admit, I don't quite understand the issue on the parking, other than perhaps as a matter of convenience, because I guess, maybe I didn't explain this. What I was thinking of is not, like, keeping the rest of the development the way it is, and then having these two buildings go taller. It's more like, sort of, molding the buildings towards Holly Street and going up, so that you have the same total number of residential units, but they're concentrated in a higher area. So the total number of parking spaces should be the same, just admittedly, people who lived in someplace might have to walk further. Okay?
That's, that's right. And also-
But that doesn't sound to me like as big of an issue of having to go deeper in building a garage and going below water tables and whatnot.
I think from a development and design perspective, it's, like you said, it's more of an issue of convenience and leasability to the developer. And I think it's appropriate to, you know, ask these questions of the developer, too, to get their perspective.
Yeah, the, that would probably be what they, let me ask a follow-up on that, though. When issues of the economic trade-offs of different construction materials and whatnot come up, does staff typically tend to challenge the applicant to say, "Okay, walk us through that"? In other words, what exactly are we talking about? A $2 difference? Are we talking about $100 a square foot difference? I mean, do we have those kind of discussions?
Yeah, we do, to some extent. I mean, you know, we ask those questions, but at the same time, a developer can say, "Sure, we'll provide you with that data, but we're not willing to consider that." It doesn't, you know, make our development project work the way we want it to, or pro forma or something. So you can have those conversations, and we do. But again, it's up to the developer to kind of make a proposal to the city.
Well, then, again, I will pass on, after just making a comment that perhaps, I would actually like to have council come back, not necessarily tonight, but certainly before we make a decision, and explain to me again what the ground rules are for our decision-making and the entitlement process. I mean, just to be hypothetical, you were saying, Mr. Savay, that the applicant could say, "Well, I just don't want to do it that way." And, I mean, hypothetically, could we say, "Well, fine, then we're not going to grant the entitlements." Okay? I know that, put that boldly, we can't do that. But I've always been led to believe by staff that we have a fair amount of negotiating flexibility at this stage of the process. And I guess another way of phrasing my question is, I'd like council to explain to us exactly how much we have, as best you can. Not necessarily tonight, that can be next time.
Council with any-
Council thoughts.
Oh, council. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to kind of go back to the first part of your question, you do have the discretion whether or not to agree with what's being proposed. And from a city staff perspective, we are obligated to consider what is being proposed in an application by state law as well. So that's the question, I think. Greg?
And again, I want to be clear. I don't, I think the mayor made it clear, we're trying to sort of get through as many questions as we can. So I don't mind having this come back at the next meeting.
If Mr. Rubens can do that and-
I just want to make sure I understand the question. It sounds like, what's the limits, in general, what are the limits of your discretionary review on this project or a project like this?
Yes, if I had to distill the conversation that Mr. Savay and I were having about heights, it was, yes, we considered it. Applicant said, "We're not interested in doing that." And I guess what I'm asking is, can we come back and say, "Well, we really would like you to look at that." And it's like, really important to us.
Well, you can, you can look at that. There is a limitation because of the SEQA review, but on the heights, because of what was studied previously. But you could ask, within your view of this, different variations on the heights of the different buildings. You can talk about, because it's a planned development, you have a lot of discretion in setting the zoning for the site through that planned development. But I think Mr. Savay is correct in that what we're, we are obligated to present to you, what the applicant's proposing. But again, it's subject to your, the findings that you need to make in approving a project. And the legislative act, it's more, legislative action, and the ordinance is more of a policy statement. But within that is the planned unit development standards that you're going to apply to the project, so they are interrelated.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Couple more here. Mr. Savay, or whomever, the commercial, like Building 7 and then the Building 8, where we, let's say, the office space, all that, is that all going to be controlled by the developer? Basically, the developer is going to rent it out, developer gets the rent and so on. The city doesn't have anything to do with those two buildings?
Yeah, I mean, they lease it out, they rent it. We do have some conditions in terms of the uses that can and cannot go in there, and how they can be used.
But if we wanted to change those buildings, you know, again, sort of to Mr. Olbert's point, we can offer that and say, you know, "We want to change this building, and we'll be happy to vote for you, but if you don't want to change it, we won't."
Sure.
Okay. The other question I have, in the plaza area, the transit area right there, we're going to open it up, and we're going to, instead of cars going in now, there's going to be people. Is there going to be a curb on the El Camino Real?
Yes.
Okay. Because I can see somebody who hasn't been there in a while, assuming, let's just say this ever got built, somebody hasn't come back for three years, and they want to go to the train station and take a right-hand turn. All right? You may laugh, but-
No, no, I think that's a good point.
That, I just want to make sure there's a curb, so they'll be pretty obvious that you're not going to be able to turn in there.
There's a curb, and there will also be some vertical elements. The landscape architect called them plinths.
Plinths, sorry?
Plinths.
Okay.
But they're, they could also be called bollards or some other raised, you know.
I was going to say bollards.
So you'll see from a-
I didn't see that in the picture?
Yeah, they're little, like, blocks in the front along El Camino, and you can sit on them, but they rise up, maybe three feet or so. And so you'll have a visual cue that you can't turn in.
I think that was explained, and I guess I didn't get it, because I was thinking of bollards is, okay.
And I move that we call those Bob's bollards.
Bob's bollards. Thanks so much. I really appreciate that. So, those are a couple of questions. Ms. Clapper?
Yes. Okay. Returning to my parking questions. So I understand that there is more residential parking that is needed by the number of units that are currently planned. And I'm wondering if there was any discussion about how those extra spaces could be used, either for community parking, or for storage areas that could be separately rented by people who are living in the residential buildings. And looking not only at what is deemed excess, or could be deemed excess at this point in time, but as time goes on, and given that this is successful as being a transit-oriented development, that there would be less parking of automobiles by the residents, that the space in the parking area could actually be used for other purposes by the, by the people living there. Was there any discussion or options that have been looked at?
There was, there was some discussion, and in fact, there's a condition that would require some of the parking spaces under Buildings 5 and 6 to be used and shared by the employees of the Buildings 7 and 8, the commercial buildings, so that it would relieve some of the retail parking on the surface areas of the SAM Trans lot next to the building there. So there is that condition. So there was a discussion about how that evolved. But in terms of the rest of the residential buildings, there hasn't really been a discussion about usage of those other residential spaces.
Okay.
Or using them for other purposes.
And again, our parking standards tend to be minimum. You have to at least provide this many. This is how many parking spaces the applicant is proposing to provide in those buildings. And over the life of the project, there may be needs for storage space or whatever, and then they could come back and ask to adjust those, as our experience over 20 or 30 years changes in terms of how much parking, we believe, goes with this kind of housing.
I would just want to make sure that, however that portion of the building is being built, that we're taking into account any separate fire codes or other kinds of applicable codes that would give the flexibility to that space. Because I think that's one of the attributes of this project, is to be able to re-delegate that space to a more effective use in the future. So something I would like to be able to revisit. And then, a follow-up to that would be looking at the parking space in the multimodal parking lot, given that it's been indicated that we would have at least 226 spaces, possibly more, given what's being looked at, and that, on average, 100 spaces are being used. So they've talked, in the staff report, it indicates that there might be some additional spaces that would be provided for community use after 6 o'clock and on the weekends. But it sounds like there might be some spaces that would be available during the day also. And I'd like to find out, is that something that we can somehow build the options for possibly working out something with SAM Trans on, in this PD that we're looking at? Or how would we go about looking at those options?
I think that's a question for SAM Trans. And now that question has been posed, I'm sure I see Mr. Fitzpatrick, and perhaps he could address that.
Good evening again. Brian Fitzpatrick, manager of real estate property development for SAM Trans. Yes, SAM, the concept of using excess parking, if you will, is not unusual on our system, and we would be amenable to trying to work something out with the city. The one caveat we would have would be that parking that's excess today may not be excess tomorrow. So anything would be done with the caveat that parking for transit customers would be primary. But we certainly would be amenable to working something out. And we also are working on trying to build more than those 226 spots in that area, given the constraints and those other things. So certainly, it's something we'd be amenable to looking into.
Thank you. Was that the equivalent of three questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Plenty, I'd say. Mr. Grokot?
I'm going to ask the, my big question for the night. Let me first ask this. When we talk about this entitlement process and approving a PUD, how tightly knit are these plans to what we're approving?
They are incorporated into the planned development and approved. They're also incorporated into the conditions of approval. I think the, basically, when we come back at design review, the location and massing are basically approved by the PD, but details like exactly the window design, exactly the awning design, those kinds of things, there'd be some flexibility. The character of the buildings in terms of roof overhangs, those kinds of things, we would expect what comes in at design review would have to have the same kind of look and feel. But if, you know, the exact design of those particular elements are refined, you know, we would still, that would still be consistent with the planned development. At this point, we're looking basically at the site plan, at the scale, and the footprints of the buildings, and the general kind of character. And through design review, we would take it to the next-
Let me ask this question. And I have to say, no disrespect to- Let me ask this question. And I, I have to say, no disrespect to anyone here, but like I said, I, I poured through these things with a fine-tooth comb. And I just know that if I turned in a set of plans to the San Carlos Planning Department to go through a design review process, or a, I forget what we call it, RCDC or something.
RDRC.
RDRC, yeah. And, and there were this many errors, they would be, quite frankly, rightfully so, they'd be sent back to me, and I'd be told, you're missing this here, you're missing that there, straighten it out, fix it, label this, label that. That's why even I asked you about the elevations. I frankly, hadn't gotten as far as the engineering plans, but when I was looking at the elevations, I don't see, for instance, you know, I see floor levels, but no, they're not related, except to say, this is 10 feet to here, and 10 feet to there, and 10 feet to there. Look, if you've done engineering and civil engineering, you know those floor elevations, so you can say, we're 40 feet above grade, above sea level, we're 60 feet, we're, you know, and you can give those numbers, and they're not on here. But actually, more to my point, I, I wish I could hold these up and show them to, to everybody, but I've got page after page after page here where I've looked at the, the floor, the roof plants particularly, and compared them to the elevations, and they're just mistakes. There's things that aren't here, there are things that are incorrect. And I didn't know what to do about that, except to mark them up like I was a plan checker. And I think these things, if, if that, if they are knit to the approval process, I'd be more than happy to supply these to city staff, who can supply them then to the architect and say, straighten this stuff out, because this needs to be correct. Some of it's minor, but some of it impacts the massing of the building and the, the appearance of it. So that's why I asked that question. Now, tied to that, I want to ask this question. I think one of the reasons I went through this also is because frankly, I hadn't paid that close of attention to this project until I knew it was coming to council, and then I got the drawings, and I'm really digging into it. And I really wanted to get a good grasp of what we were talking about in terms of massing. How big is this? And after going through it, I realized, this thing's huge. This is big. And I think, as a trained design individual, you know, I can go through this, and I can do what I do, and look at this really closely, and really absorb it, and get a good feel for it. Most of these people out here can't. And I would even venture to say, no disrespect to my council members, but they don't do what I do for a living either. And it's hard, it's hard for an individual that doesn't to look at something that's two-dimensional and get an idea of something that's three-dimensional. And furthermore, going along with that, what the architect did here in this submittal was show us the very front elevation closest to either Old County Road or El Camino, those two major, you know, views, if you will. And it's very confusing, because you can't get the real profile of what these buildings are. So here's my big question for the evening. Are we entitled as a council, if we were to so agree to this, to request the applicant to put up story polls to show the actual massing of this project along the El Camino and Old County Road?
Hey, folks, folks, this isn't, this isn't a football game, okay? It's not a football game. Please.
Yeah, you can, you can ask for that.
Okay.
Other communities do it. Some of the issues with story polls are there, you know, it depends. You can't build a whole building, so it's, it's somewhat difficult to kind of assess. You know, like you said, the layperson-
Yeah.
-to walk up and see a stick in the, in the sky, or sometimes they use balloons or whatever, or cranes, you know. So it'll give you, it can give you some sense of height and things, but it's, it's more difficult to get a sense of the massing and bulk of a building. So what, what we, what we think, you know, in terms of the planning practice as the standard today, is we typically ask for three-dimensional imagery and stuff that, where you can kind of move around the building in a computer-aided, you know, visual, you know, three-dimensional images. And we only saw one or two of those this evening. The applicant does have some of these, that, that, and these were not presented to the council this evening. I think that that would be really helpful for the council to see, and the applicant, or the architect to walk you through. But again, you, you have the ability to ask for story polls, but it might be helpful for the council to see the three-dimensional imagery and have that explained and, and get a sense of it. The other way to, to go about it is to get out there and walk with the plans and these three-dimensional images in the field and kind of get a sense for where you are in the neighborhood, and, you know, and where the trees are, and the houses are, and the berm is. So that's, that's helpful as well.
Thank you.
You know, to Mr., I have to interrupt for a second. For Mr. Grokot's point, I think that he should, I mean, again, I'm not telling you what to do, but I think you should give them those plans that you marked up. And I think, again, I'm not trying to say you shouldn't talk about it tonight, but offline, because it's inside baseball for you guys. And if there's errors, they should be obviously corrected, because if we're approving, you just indicated we're approving all those. And I, I, you know, trust Mr. Grokot has a, a good feel for those things, as perhaps Mr. Olbert has for the numbers, or I might have for the numbers, and Mr. Collins, another skill set, and Ms. Clapper a third, or fourth. I think that's very, very important. So I, I think you need to, I mean, I'm not telling you, but, and the other thing personally, I, I would like to, as you mentioned, get that 3D thing. And I would have no trouble taking time out of my day, or whenever, to walk along there with those. I think that'd be great. I, I, the story poll, I, you know, we, I was on planning commission, story polls for small, like add-ons to build, to a bedroom, to a house. I mean, it's pretty easy to see what the difference, it might go up 10 feet or 15 feet. I'm not sure, like you said, we, I could understand the massing, even if you threw up story polls. But if with the 3D and walking along, to me, that would probably be more beneficial for myself. But I'm willing to listen to whatever the council wants to do on that. So I don't know whether you want to talk about that for a minute now, or, or whatever, whatever you folks want to do. Any, any input, Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, actually, what I was going to say is that, is that I, I think Mr. Grokot's suggestion is a good one from my point of view. I, I wouldn't object to seeing the 3D renderings, the 3D, 3D models. I think I recall seeing them in, in an earlier stage. But frankly, your comment is exactly on target. It, for me, it's, it's, I'm experiencing this even with my home construction project. It's, it's very hard to visualize this until stuff starts going up, and then all of a sudden, it leaps into perspective, and I go, oh, that's how big it's going to be. Okay? So I actually, and I'm, I'm open to input from staff and what the general consensus is. I actually would lean more towards some kind of story poll thing, just so as I walk along, I can sort of see it, and I can imagine the planes, and go, okay, now I see how tall that's going to be. That's my perspective.
The difficulty I have with story polls is how many do you want? You know, I mean, that, like Mr. Seve said, you can't build a building. It's one thing when you add on a bedroom, it's easy to put up a story poll and get a feel for it. How many, that's, that's the rub of it to me. But again, maybe, I, I, like I said, it's just, it's, it's how everyone projects and understands what they're, what they're trying to look at. So, other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to be difficult, but I, I would propose we do both. At the end of this project, I, I don't want there to be any comment that we didn't look at this project from every possible angle. And putting up story polls, I have no problem with. I would love to see a 3D presentation. In fact, I asked for that, I don't know, six months or more ago. And I don't know why we couldn't have a 3D presentation, or at least a, you know, something that is a-
Walk around.
Almost like a film of, of a 3D that could be presented at one of our meetings. I think that really helped, would help everybody get a, a good sense of what this project will look like when done.
Ms. Clapper?
Well, this is great, because this is using up one of my questions. So now I'll get to have another question. Because I was going to ask, did, were we going to be able to see the enhanced version of those 3D simulations that we just saw the beginning of several meetings ago? So that would be great. I also like the idea of the story polls. I agree with Councilmember Collins that with a project of this size, really, there's not too much that we can, it would be hard to, to be excessive in how much we could possibly do to help us visualize what this is going to look like. So I would go for both of those. I think it's a complex project to share with story polls, because there are so many different heights, and shapes, and volumes. But I think it can be, be done. And I, I would encourage us to look at those options.
The consensus, obviously, is to have story polls. So my, my thought would be, if, if we're going to do that, and again, you're much more, and maybe even you are more experienced in doing this, when you mentioned crane, that to me, because that could move.
Mm-hmm.
You could stand there, and you could watch it, you could see it at a certain height, and then you could move it, and you could see another height, as opposed to a story pole. I don't know, does that, does that help? Because I'm just thinking, how many, how many story polls do you have to build this stuff, as opposed to just a crane that you can say, okay, here's, or two cranes? Here's one, easy for me to spend money for other, from other people, but two cranes you've got, here's, here's the size of this building, and like this, then they could move along and say, here's the size of this building, here's the size of-
But you're talking about like on a, a one-off occasion where they're going to do this. I think this needs to be a static display, that people can come by when they have the time in the community to take a look at it.
If you're going to, if you're going to do that, I, I, someone, someone who's much smarter than me is going to have to under, figure out how you're going to build that.
Well-
That is like, that's a lot of holes.
I, I know it's not easy, but I know, and, and I just did a project in Hillsborough, where I had to put up story polls for both ends of a house that we were adding second floors on. It's, it's not easy, it is complex. But if, if a homeowner can burden that expense and trouble, then I think certainly a developer can. The thing I had in mind personally, I, I don't want to, you know, drive the process here necessarily, but simply what I had in mind was something that would give the central, especially down the rib of these buildings, as you go longitudinally, north and south, that would pick up the, pretty much the max heights, because that's where they occur. They, what they're showing in the, in these elevations at the fronts is the three, a lot of three-story, but there's a lot of four-story behind it that is faded on these drawings, purposely so, so that, you know, it doesn't, they were trying to do something. They were trying to show you, these are the elevations that are most close to you. But there are these ridges of roofs in the background that you don't see in the drawings, and that's what I'd like to see with story polls. And the way they do it in residential is you put a story poll, and you draw orange netting across that shows the ridge line, and you just keep going. And that would show people both the breaks in the building, and pretty much the, the height and mass of them.
Mr. Seve, how long do you think it would take to do that?
I'd have to, I think we, we need to get a check-in with the developer-
Sure.
-on this. Also, with the three-dimensional imagery, the architect is prepared to show you that this evening. She has those. You could always wait till the 12th, but she is prepared. It might take 10, 15 minutes to walk you through those. So those are, those are two issues. I'd like to circle back to something in a moment, but I think we should probably talk to the developer and ask him how long it would take him to do something like that.
Okay. Mr. Byrd?
Mr. Byrd? Hi there. I guess the request of story polls is rather unorthodox with buildings of this scale. I've never seen it done. But I think we have real opportunity, because unlike a home where you're adding a second story, we have, for example, a building across the street that has the same sort of scale and massing that we're talking about, and the same type of construction. I think a good, better opportunity, rather than some random sticks, would be to, A, look at Sherry's presentation, three-dimensional, it can be expanded, there's a complete 3D model that exists, that, that really will give the visual perspective much better than some sticks ever could. And we could, similarly, we could do a walk-around with any individual who wants to, any city council member who wants to, you know, individually or in a group fashion, if that's what you elected to do. And again, I think part of that would be walking the fronts of the Pacific hacienda, again, similar scales and heights. And, you know, we can, we can look at that, and look with the, at the plans, look at existing building that is very similar in that height and scale, and set back, and then again, go to the property, and then look at these 3Ds. As far as, as far as story polls, again, never heard of it done. I mean, you're talking about, I mean, just think structurally of putting up poles. I mean, you're talking about putting up telephone poles, and how many corners and whatever, and I don't know how many months it would take to get that together, because we would be erecting some visage of the building, and it would need to meet structural codes and things like that to be putting it up there. And I'm not sure that it would really accomplish anything. Again, when you have similar-style buildings that you can look at, and you have good, complete 3D renderings of the project that have been done. So hopefully, you'll see what Sherry does. If you need more extensive things than she has this week, we can certainly bring them back at the next session. Thank you.
Do we get to make our comments too, since you did?
No, 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 just, Ben, you know, this is public, public comment, you can make them all, you're going to get, we're not voting on any of this stuff till, you know. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just one comment about the 3D presentation we might be seeing right now. Like I said, there, I, you know, I found things in here where whole roofs were missing and so forth. So we have to keep that in mind, that whatever that is, it's probably going to change.
I understand.
And I'd just like to, Mr. Mayor, circle back to that point. What the council is approving with this plan development is, the plan development, the plan looks like this, it's actually attachment one. You're really not approving the construction drawings or the building drawings along with this.
That's not what was said, Mr. Seve.
Well, no, I, I'd like to-
She said you were.
Well-
So I just want to-
The, the plans are included in this. I mean, if you look at the plan development booklet, the, the plans are in here. But these aren't meant to be construction drawings, they're just meant to be bulk and mass drawings. The detailed drawings would need to be to the level of specificity when we get to the architectural review process with the planning commission later, and again, at the building phase. And we would be happy to accept any comments on those, on those drawings at this time. But I just wanted to clarify that this is the document that the, the commission is approving, and not the building plans, per se.
Does this, okay, if I may?
Go ahead.
What's in here is different than what's here?
It's the same, essentially the same, yes.
It is the same.
It is the same. It is the same.
So you are-
But again, it's not, it's not a building drawing, it's not intended to be for building permit purposes. It's general bulk and mass.
Well, I think Mr. Grokot's going to talk to staff, you're going to figure out who's on first on this. We're not approving those tonight, anyway. So we'll figure out which end is, is up.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one point before the 3D? And the reason I requested Mr. Seve say that is because this is what's attached, this document is going to be, should you approve it, attached to the ordinance for the plan unit. So any adjustments to the plan of development need to be reflected in this document.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Not ju, not just the plans, but-
Understand. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So I have a few animation clips from the SketchUp 3D model that we have of, of the entire project, that focus on various aspects of the project. And if there's something that you'd like to focus more on in the next meeting, I'd be happy to make other renderings of different parts of the project. So after I've gone through the clips, let me know if there's other things that you'd be interested in seeing next time. Because we do have the model of the whole project, and so we can do little video clips of, you know, whatever is of most interest to you. So this first one is focusing on the, the retail and Depot Plaza component. Another thing that I'll qualify here in this first animation is that there were some complications. This is, this green, sort of carpet-esque element here, is actual, the actual existing topography. And as we combine all of the models together, the way that the plaza interacted with the existing topography, it looks like the lawn goes over the plaza. There is a plaza here, and I'll correct it for the next renderings, but it's not grass, it's actually, you can see how the plaza dissolves into the existing topography. That'll be resolved. But there's a few aspects of the model when it comes to the topography that, you know, aren't finely rendered. Okay, so I'll start with this one first. This is Building 8, Depot Building, Building 7, Building 6. This is a three-story portion of Building 6. The four-story portion of Building 6 is beyond.
Bollards.
Bob's bollards.
So I'll just back up a little bit here. I think, I think this is a pretty good illustration here of the one-story portion of the Building 8, which is closest to the Depot here, going up to two stories. And these, these outdoor, these areas would actually provide outdoor areas for the office users to come out and have, yes.
If I may interrupt. And this was an issue I had raised earlier, but-
If I may interrupt, and this was an issue I had raised earlier, but do you have anything that is basically a rendering of what a human being would see as they were walking along the sidewalk?
Actually, I do, I do, and I'll get to those. Well, actually, we were walking along the sidewalk.
No, no, walking along the sidewalk next to the building, on the east side of El Camino.
On the east side of El Camino. I don't have one of those.
Okay.
But I can prepare, prepare that for next.
Yeah, I, well, I mentally imagine, I, I'd actually appreciate to see something that was like walking the entirety of the project, because I'm trying to get a sense of what it looks like from a person's eye view as, as you're on the sidewalk.
This next one that I'm gonna bring up is actually from the east side, walking through the east side neighborhood. This is on Springfield, walking towards the project. I'll wait a minute for it to finish loading here. Okay. So this is Building Four that you're gonna see here. Walking down Springfield, we're gonna take a left down Old County Road, and then we'll look right underneath the overpass.
By the way, as you're playing that, are those trees actually to scale with the trees that are actually there?
They are.
Roughly?
They're roughly. They're not, they're SketchUp trees, so they're not the exact trees. And then there's also a few trees in here that are part of the East Side Connect Plan. So there's a couple of extra trees along Old County Road that are part of the East Side Connect Plan. There's also a lot of planning that's actually not shown, the, the small planting on the berm isn't shown, just 'cause it's kind of beside the point at this point. Again, this is Building Four. It's just three stories, stepping up to four stories. These are the East Side Connect trees. And this is the back of Buildings Five and Six. Again, this is a three-story portion of Building Four. And this'll be going down the El Camino Real side of the project. This is Building Four. This is Buildings Five and Six. Here you can see the two sort of shorter portions of the three-story portion of the buildings flanking Holly Street, which sort of framed the entrance from Holly Street. This is approaching the depot plaza from, from the north.
Seems like that's on loop forever, so.
Yeah. This is Buildings Five and Six, Seven and Eight. So I think what I'm hearing is that we would want a rendering from the, from the east side for the next, for the next presentation?
If, if I may.
Walking along, walking along the.
Side.
The. Going in a collaborative fashion with the architect. One of the reasons that we looked from the other side of El Camino is that when we, we preliminarily went down that side of the street, you're gonna see trees. You see very little building except what's down at your level, but you're in a canopy of trees walking along there. It'll be helpful for you to actually see it, and we're glad to provide it. But that's what you'll find is similar to when you, a little different than across the street, because across the street, there aren't two rows of trees necessarily at, at that project. But most of the project disappears from the trees. Again, it'll be helpful to see the 3D walk, walk by and see what you really do see.
Through the chair.
Mr. Grokot?
If we're talking about doing, asking her to do more of these walkarounds, 3D walkarounds, one of the things that I really marked up a lot on the plans here was trying to figure out the elevation of the train berm relative to the buildings. So in other words, trying to get an idea of how much of these buildings, as they're presented so far, rise up above the berm as viewed from either, you know, Sylvan or any of those streets, or just walking along Old County Road on the east side of Old County, as most residents would do, right? And I would really like to see that. I'm not so much interested in flying around while it's fun and it makes you feel good when you watch something that, you know, makes you feel like you're in an airplane. I just want something that allows us to walk up and down. And actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm not so, I, I would prefer actually that trees on the berm be eliminated from the, this walk-around rendering, because my understanding is that with electrification and then with high-speed rail, the only part of these meetings that I went to with the Planning Commission to sit in and listen, it seemed to indicate that they just weren't sure where trees would stay, given those two projects. So I would rather not, while the trees are beautiful and I understand the idea of putting them in to, you know, soften buildings, because I'm not confident of what will be there and whether or not they can stay, I would prefer that the trees just not even be in the renderings.
Sure. And just to clarify, the, there was no, in the renderings you just saw and in future renderings, the, there is no planting on the berm. So the planting that you'll see on the east side of the buildings.
East Side Connect?
Is actually, well, on the, on the east side of the buildings, but on the, on the project site.
Oh, I got you.
Those are actually on the project site. So just to clarify, those trees that we're showing on our site plan are not, are not in question in terms of the Caltrain project.
Okay.
So, so any trees that we'll be showing will only be the ones that we can guarantee onsite.
Through the chair. Apropos Mr. Byrd's comments, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly what year I would use, but I, I would personally like to not see, the walkthrough I was talking about, not see trees that are 25 years old, because for most of the time of, most of the sort of relevant timeframe, they're not gonna be that big. So I don't know whether it's five years, seven years, something like that. I, or, or take them out. I mean, whichever, whichever makes more sense.
Sure.
Yeah, because that was one of my, that was basically one of my questions, because I asked that, I remember at the last meeting or way, a couple of meetings ago. It's great to show the pictures, but they aren't gonna look like that the first day.
No.
I think you gave me 10 years last time.
Yeah, 10 to 15.
And, you know, and so, you know, the, the reality is that, you know, a lot of things get hidden after 10 years, but for the first 10 years, there they are. So that's why I tend to agree with my colleagues on, on, on trees, that, you know, it's pretty, but the reality is the first five or six years, they're not gonna, they're not gonna look like.
And actually, after 10 years, you take your glasses off and your vision's gone, so you can't see anything anyway.
After 10 years, I wouldn't be there. All right, well, we still have, the question is, I mean, we, and it, this is a big, this is a big deal. I, I mean, we can, we can delay this project till the cows come home if you want. I mean, that's up to you. That's up to the council. But, but folks, this isn't a football game. I'm please asking you, okay? Please be respectful of what we say and what folks come up here to say, because we're gonna be respectful when you all come up to talk. So please, okay? I really appreciate it. Thank you. You know, we can, we can do whatever you want, but if you wanna put story poles up, then we gotta figure out a timeframe and, and, you know, and that's fine. But I just wanna make sure everybody understands what's gonna go on.
Right. And again, I, I'm not asking for, like, when you do a residential project and, you know, say you're in Woodside, they wanna see every corner.
Gotcha.
The gable ends, the ridge. You have to put the netting across so you show the eaves and the ridge.
How big is your house?
And, yeah.
5,000 square feet?
And.
Does it go up 30 feet?
Well, if you look at the gravity of that expense to a property owner in a residential project, it's quite high compared to the overall cost of the project. It's not easy to do. And we do put that burden on a homeowner. So in this regard, what I would think of is something, again, not that's at every corner, but just down the spine of these buildings, to give the idea of how high they are and, and where the breaks are between the buildings. So that, especially, you know, my concern, Mr. Mayor, a, a great deal of it comes from thinking about, you know, we're talking about entitlements, property entitlements. Well, you know, we, we have people living on the east side who have entitlement too to their property and to sunshine and views and so forth. And I, I have great concern for what does this project look like from that side of San Carlos? And the only thing I have to go by right now is I look at 1001 El Camino, which is on the other side of El Camino, and I try to imagine, you know, eight of those buildings. And it's not easy to do. And I think if we had story poles with netting that went across and showed the maximum height at the center line of these buildings, we'd have something.
Well, again, I, I can look at 1001 El, I mean, they did give a little bit of a graphic here.
Yeah.
Okay. On the east side, you know, there was some, some picture, and we'll get some more. And I can look at 1001 El Camino, and I can stand behind it, and I can, you know, stand across the street from it. And I mean, again, everybody's got a different eye.
Yeah.
To see how big it is. And if those are the, if, if someone says that, that's the size of the buildings, I can pick it up. But whatever the council wants to do, I'm just one here. So, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm just trying to understand what folks wanna do.
I, I think it can be done, but it's, I, I know it's not easy.
There's no question it can be done.
Yeah.
I think the question is, is the timing of it, to be quite blunt, okay? If we, as far as I'm concerned, I thought this council, which was elected, was gonna decide it. The way you're pushing it, I mean, it's possible that this council won't decide it. Another council will, which is gonna kick it a little farther, because if there's a new person that replaces you, or I, or Ms. Clapper, or all three of us, they're gonna have to come up to speed, whether it's one, two, or three people. And we're not gonna be able to do this. And I'm just trying to be fair on both sides of the issue to, to make sure that folks get a fair hearing on both sides. It's not postponed inevitably or indefinitely because they went through the process. So that's all, that's all.
If I may, the reason, the reason I thought of this is because as well-versed as I am at looking at these things, I look quite closely at 1001 Laurel Street, not because it came to the council. It never came to the council.
Never did.
But I sat with Mr. Bear a number of times and looked at models and drawings and all kinds of things. And I'll tell you, what I see there today is not what I thought I was gonna see when it, when it all happened. And yet, there's nothing we can do about it now. It's there. And I don't wanna make that same mistake, that we put something in place that'll be there for, you know, 50, 60, 75 years, and we all have to live with it.
I, I understand completely. I'm just, I'm just going back and forth on.
Yeah.
Another side of the issue. So whatever the council wants to do, there's five of us, so we can do whatever we want.
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
All right. So the question that I have then is if we do this story pole construction, how long does that take? When does it start? When, when does it, how long does it stay up? When does it come down?
I think we need to talk to the developer about that, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I mean, I think we should hear from.
I agree.
The developer. So Mr. Byrd?
For example, could it be done before the next meeting?
Oh, God. I'm just throwing it out there.
Maybe. Mr. Byrd?
Not a chance. I don't even think it can get done this year. I mean, you, you have to understand, we'd have, we'd have to figure out and show what's involved, but, I mean, we're talking about building a big barn-raising pole structure, but not 10, 20 feet. You know, these are 50-foot-high buildings, 100 feet long. I, I don't even know, it's never been done that I know of. What I request for you guys to consider is let us come back at this next meeting. Take public comment, do those sorts of things. Let us come back to this next meeting. Let us do a very complete 3D presentation. The entire project has been built in a 3D model. Every angle, the only reason you saw small parts is because it's an enormous file that can't easily be put here. We'll have to bring our own computer and those sorts of things. But we will do walk-bys of every perspective that we can imagine and work with staff to do that, and give us an opportunity to come do that so you can visually observe what's there from lots of different angles. And again, a 3D, a 3D movable model from, they, they can set the person up, the person will be walking at grade level, at eye level, looking at the project, and, and see if that is adequate for you guys to understand it. But again, I, I've never, I've been doing this for 30 years and never seen or heard of a, a city or place ever doing, attempting to do that on a building of this scale. And I don't know that it actually can be done. So at this point, nothing could get done between now and next meeting. The best we can do is work with the 3D model that we have, give you an extensive presentation of that, and, and see how informed you feel like you can be. And any one of you that wants to, you know, we'll make the time, any one of you that wants to between now and then, or any time, to, to, we'll have the project architect and ourselves meet with the plans, with the model in place, and do as much walking and looking as, as it takes. Thank you.
Through, through the chair, if, if I may, just to follow up on that. Mr. Seve, any perspective that you would add, or anybody else on staff, on whether or not this is an ever-recurring practice someplace?
You know, I, in the last three cities that I worked for, and I've done extensive work on mixed-use development projects, it's never been required, you know, in any of the other cities in my last, in the last 20 years or so that I can recall. So I would agree with that. You know, I think that there may be other ways to do it as opposed to using story poles, you know, wood and, and other things like that. Maybe there are, like I said, for signage, I've seen, I've had architects, sign people use cranes because they're movable objects. You can raise and lower things. You can hang something from a crane. So that's something we could explore, but again, that's done for signage and not for buildings.
I think you also mentioned balloons, right?
I beg your pardon?
I think you also mentioned balloons.
Yeah, balloons, they blow around. That's the only problem with balloons. They, you know, those aren't really accurate either. We could try that on a, we could try, those things are easy to do. So we could attempt that. I honestly think that in looking at these 3D models, and I've spent a lot of time looking at 3D models, and these in particular, you, you do have to spend some time sitting and going over them over and over and kind of looking at them to get a, a real good feel for it. I think that the suggestions of walking down the street by council are all good suggestions in terms of having you visualize these things. I really think that taking some of the printed versions of these out in the field are probably the, the best thing for someone to do. We did do that with the commissioners and the GSC board and the architects, developer. We all walked together through the neighborhood and, and looked at all these things together, and it was very informative. And you really get a feel for what's there in the neighborhood, what's there in real life in comparison to what you're seeing. So those are my suggestions at this point.
Well, it seemed to me that if, if the developer's gonna come back with a 3D situation, we're not giving up any rights. We're not saying we're not gonna do polls or anything. We're just gonna look at this, and if we're satisfied, we are, and if we're not, we're not. So I mean, it seems like that's a reasonable.
Step.
Step. I mean, like I said, we're not giving up the, it doesn't have to be tonight that we vote on anything, because we're not gonna be voting on anything else. So if that's appropriate, we'll just have them do what they do. And if, if it works out, fine. And if it doesn't, then we'll go back to the suggestion that you made. Is that appropriate? Is that okay with you?
Yeah. I think in the meantime, I'll do some research on story poles for commercial buildings.
That's fine.
Because I'm pretty sure it's been done before.
Okay, well, I have to admit, I, I haven't seen it either. And I, and I, we never built commercial buildings. We built residential, but.
Yeah.
I never, I haven't seen it either.
And I, I, through, through the chair, I take it, Mr. Seve, if we wanted to walk the, walk the route, we should get in touch with you.
Yeah, we, I think we can arrange some meetings, yes. If you're interested, please contact me.
Yeah, I am.
Yes.
Thank you.
I am as well.
Okay, good. We're good. All right.
Is that something that we're gonna arrange individually, or is it something that we can arrange as a, as a special council meeting?
Well, if we have a special council meeting, it's a public hearing, and then we've got Mr. Rubin standing there, you know, whatever folks wanna do. I mean, everybody's got a different schedule.
That's, that's why I'm asking, it might be helpful to hear.
Mr. Rubens.
Council comments at the time, though.
Individually is probably the best way to go.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that way. Well, any comments you'd have, we can make in this forum when we come back.
Mr. Collins, if you go with me, I'll buy you coffee.
Oh, geez. And no, no more than two at a time, as I say. Okay, let's see, that was Mr. Grokot?
Yeah.
We had a question there, so let's go to Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to remember where I left off. Okay. One of them was, well. One of them was, will any existing mature trees be removed to accommodate any of the buildings in this project? I think I got a, a, sort of a picture of it by that 3D presentation, but one of the questions I wrote down is what's the size comparison between Building 7 and 8? And then the other one is, could the third floor or some of the third floor be moved from Building 8 to Building 7? I'll stop there.
So for the first question, within the project, there would not be any mature trees removed? I believe that's, yeah. The footprint of the, of the project doesn't have any trees right now. You're asking, the question is about the comparison of the floor plate between Buildings 7 and 8?
Just approximate total size of each building. Is it, do I understand it correctly, that Building 7 is two stories?
That's correct.
And Building 8 is three stories?
That's correct.
So, I, yes, the footprint, yes. That's probably the best way.
I've got it, actually. Building 7 is 6,852 square feet in total, and Building 8 is 28,436 square feet. But perhaps you're asking about maybe the floor plate? Is that, is that correct?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. I think we can get that for you, but I believe that, that Building 7 is about approximately half the size in terms of the floor plate, but I think we can, we can get that information for you. Do we have that?
Yeah.
Okay, we have that.
So the footprint of Building 7 is about 30, 38 to 39 hundred square feet for the ground floor. And the square footage of the ground floor for Building 8 is about 12 to 13,000.
So about three to one.
Then the last question he had was, can eight, third, the third floor of eight move to seven?
I think that answers my question. It's hard to move the third floor of a building that's three times the size.
And I think the other consideration is, as you saw in the renderings, Building 7 is a very narrow building, it's much smaller, and so it would be sort of an architectural oddity to add a third story to that narrow building.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually like to return a little, to the discussion that Mr. Grokot was having with Ms. Menier about the zoning variances. What I'd like to get a feel for is, I know on my own home construction project, I have a couple of little variances, and I know why I got them, I wanted to have a bigger backyard. So what was it, what was the basis, the logic behind the city granting, or not granting, but proposing, staff proposing, accepting these zoning variances? What was driving it? What is the developer getting out of it, et cetera?
Well, again, I do understand having, I think variances are the most difficult permits that we deal with because the findings are, some of the findings are of a very narrow and technical nature. We are not looking here at a variance, we're looking at the grant of flexibility, which is specifically allowed, and so the findings are quite different than they are for a variance. What do we, what does, basically, I think what you're saying is, why should we grant any flexibility? What do we get?
Correct.
So what, what we get by developing the site, one, we get to develop the site comprehensively under one developer with a uniform or a coordinated physical appearance, architectural style, and landscaping. And that the buildings are coordinated together as opposed to if this was subdivided and then we were dealing with eight different property owners who'd each be doing, doing something. The property has some unusual characteristics. It's fairly narrow and there aren't cross streets. Way, you know, there's not a, you were asking about, Councilmember Grokot, about various lim, we don't want blocks to be longer than 500 square feet. That's one of our development guidelines, linear feet. We'd like to have a street. Well, we don't have the opportunity here because of the nature of the property. So the opportunity is to do those kinds of things. And because of the scale of the project, we also have the opportunity to ask them, because of the issue of proportionality, you know, you can't, you couldn't ask somebody who's building a single-family house, even though it's going to contribute traffic to the freeway, to be responsible for rebuilding the Holly 101 interchange. There's not a proportionality. But within the context of this project, we do have the opportunity to ask for other kinds of improvements, such as the landscaping on the berm, such as the improvements to the, the various pedestrian improvements at the various intersections. So those are the kinds of benefits, the trade-offs, they get more flexibility. They could meet the requirements, but you would end up with, you know, like, a mandatory 15-foot setback would either end up with some oddly-shaped units, or they would just simply push the buildings back and we'd have a reduced setback to the rear of the building. They have, they much, they have a much greater setback between the building and the, and the tracks and the berm than they, than they have to. So it's a series, those are the kinds of things, we get to consider it in a comprehensive way, we get to look at all of those kinds of trade-offs. We have a big enough project that we can make requests for certain kinds of improvements that we might not be able to get on a building-by-building scale. Does that help to give?
In fairness, I understood what you were doing, but I made a note here, I will be in touch with staff offline because the way it's, the way it was described, it's not a compelling argument to me. And I want to understand, I want to understand what is it that we're getting? Many of the things, my reaction would be based on my limited understanding, what you're saying, is that they seem like things that would either fall out naturally or like, maybe actually wouldn't mind having a, you know, that mandatory setback. So I will follow up with staff on that separately. Next question I have is probably for Mr. Rubens. I want to make sure I understand when we're talking about things like mitigations relating to parking and permit parking systems potentially and whatnot. You and I had talked offline about the need for there to be a nexus. And because that's a fairly significant issue to me, I want to make sure that, that we're reasonably in the clear in terms of a permit parking system, and how far back can it extend from the, from the project? Can it extend throughout the entirety of the east San Carlos neighborhoods, or are we limited in how many blocks away we can go, do you think?
Well, staff can correct me on, on this particular project, we have a TDM plan that's part of the plan development that, that will, is supposed to address some of the traffic impacts. The parking is one of the things that they're, they're proposing to get design flexibility on.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I can chime in. So, you know, what we've heard from the greater east San Carlos neighborhood is that there's a concern about overflow parking from commuters as well as potentially residents of this development. And so to kind of answer that question and to try and maybe solve a future potential problem, one of the conditions that's proposed is that a permit parking program would be made available to a neighborhood, and the setup of that system would be funded by the developer, and that's one of the conditions. So really, the, where this can be and how far away from, or what neighborhood it can be in, can be in anywhere in the, in the greater east San Carlos neighborhood, that's the intent of this. It would be based on the desire of any given neighborhood. It could, it would be, need to be 50% plus one of the neighborhood in terms of the voting for whether they wanted it or not, and it would be free to the residents of the neighborhood. So, again, I think this is another condition that the developer has agreed to do, and we can talk more about it if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I have an idea. It's 9:30 and a lot of people have stayed. And I think we should hear from them. And so they're here. If people want to ask one more question, or if they just pass on the question, and we haven't given up on questions, we're going to still have to be able to go questions, but if people just pass on the questions for tonight, and then we have, but we only have about an hour, so, and I'm going to be very strict on the time, it's three minutes. That doesn't mean you can't come back next time and talk, three minutes. But, and again, I only have four speaker slips, I'm feeling there might be more than four people want to speak, but I want to make sure, or you have more over there, okay? So if folks would like to do that, if the council agrees with me, how about, you want Mr. Grokot, Mr. Olbert?
Fine, yeah. Yeah.
I agree.
All right, so I've got some collection of names here, and then we'll go, and I'm going to give everybody three minutes, but it's going to be three minutes. Okay? And then, like I said, you can come back and next time and talk, and if you have a third meeting, you can do that, too. But everybody's, a lot of people have stayed, and I'm very encouraged by that. And they, they want to listen and they want to participate. And look who's back, Mr. Fuller. So do you have some more names for me, Ms. City Clerk? Just, okay, okay. Oh, we can, okay. Is it okay, guys? Yeah, okay.
It's time for that, they talk.
Yeah.
I don't want to keep them all night.
Well, we, that's why, this isn't going to be a 12, because we're going to be, 10:30, we're done. Because we've got to do other things. And again, if someone else wants to fill out a card as we're speaking, you can certainly do that. This isn't the end of the line. But I only, we are going to go to 10:30. It's going to be a hard, a hard finish, and it's going to be three minutes, which is a hard finish. So be concise, make your point. First one I have is Devon Cormia, and if you could queue up. The second one is Glenn Jellino. Go ahead, Ms. Cormia.
Thank you. Lived on Springfield Drive for 16 years and in San Carlos for 24 years. I have two major points I want to make tonight. One is about the size and scale, as we've been talking about, 1001, pretty large building. And we're looking at a project that's eight, seven or eight times that in scale. And as I've heard, you know, walking this, the length of this from the transit site from that plaza north of Holly, I mean, that's, could be a 10, 15-minute walk with 50-story buildings to your right. I think it would definitely change the scale of, and the feel of, the character of San Carlos as you're coming down El Camino or Old County. And I would like to see, maybe not story poles, because it'd be probably pretty hard to build around the depot, but maybe some form of visible, either a crane or balloons strung along so that we could see the visible scale of this, this development. And mainly, I would, I would like to see that not just for the people that are able to see the 3D renderings, but for every person that's here, there's another thousand in San Carlos that's not seeing these, these proposed developments. And having a visible clue to what, what the scale of this project is, I think would be really helpful for San Carlos as a whole, all the residents. And my second concern is with the congestion, specifically down Holly Street being our only exit off northbound 101. And I would like to see the city, the council require greater amount of trip reduction, either through the counties, this county scale or the city, to, you know, encourage, either by subsidizing train passes or providing other incentives for, for folks not to get into their cars and drive if you're somehow able to do that. So those are my, my two concerns.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Jellino? Followed by Dimitri Vardellis.
Good evening, members of the council. One thought I just had as your discussion with story poles was going on, and I think might be a viable solution, would be to stack shipping containers there. I think that would give us great idea what the mass is going to be, and you could probably scale it appropriately, and it could be done relatively easily. I also think that, I've heard some comments, and I recognize that a lot of you are very invested in this whole process for this project. But I want to say that the urgency for you to vote before some of you may be elected out of office or not re-elected, does not outweigh the concerns of the public and the citizens that have to live with this thing. The price for somebody new to potentially have to get up to speed, I don't think is a big price to pay in delaying this project for a couple of months if that be necessary, considering the scope and the impact it's going to have on our community. The cost, I'd also like you to be mindful that the cost of a referendum vote, which will probably happen if you decide to push this forward, is something that you should be mindful of. And I think since many of you have made it a campaign issue, I think that the citizens are going to have an opportunity to speak here on the 5th. So I'd like you to be mindful of that and give consideration of the impact this is having on the community, not just to your particular legacy as councilmembers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dimitri Vardellis, followed by Paul Maginetti?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
One other thing, according to land use 1.3, ensure, ensure the development of the TOD corridor maintains and improves the mobility of people and vehicles along and across the corridor. That's maintaining mobility of vehicles across and along the corridor. And I think we all know that what's going to happen at Holly Street is not going to enhance or help the mobility of vehicles.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mr. Vardellis, followed by Paul Maginetti.
Esteemed councilmembers, some of you may be in favor of the project, others may be opposed. But all councilmembers should be aware that this project is currently proposed, has impacts to our eastside community and to our city as a whole that are far greater than is what have been expressed in the EIR and in the developers' presentations and comments. From increased traffic, increased train noise, building height and massing, the permanent early shading of our neighborhood, lack of landscaping, especially south of Holly, increased usage and demand on L'Oreal Park by adding 500-plus new residents to our neighborhood, these are just a few of the issues, amongst many others that I won't go into detail here. Legacy and Samtrans obviously have vested interests in getting a project built, maximizing their profits, but unfortunately, they've taken a stance that is largely ignored and minimized our concerns. This approach places the burden of discovery on the city council to look at the big picture and then to dig through the minutia of the project with an extraordinarily critical eye in order for our neighborhood and our city as a whole to get a fair shake. We have had literally many hundreds of people come out against this project over the past several years over countless meetings. Even though there have been some minor changes in the project from when it was first proposed, we've had little to no traction getting our core issues addressed after years of hard effort. There's been a distinct lack of holistic thinking regarding eastside connect, PAMF, the Transit Village, Caltrain electrification projects, and how those projects will affect and impact our community and city. This lack of discussion of the impacts has been exacerbated by the piecemealing of the legacy component from the multimodal station, the South Rail Corridor portion, Caltrain electrification projects, and HSR. Few examples of this are traffic impacts to Holly Street at Old County and El Camino, and the various intersections at El Camino that run across the length of the project, impacts to landscaping and trees along the berm, given that Samtrans, Caltrain, JPB internal documents state the trees and electrification do not mix, creating, creating separate and dedicated bike lanes for bike commuters going through the underpass and the project itself that connect to our city's bike lanes. We understand that the city's economic engine is east of El Camino. We only ask that you do not continue to sacrifice our quality of life while not asking other residents and neighborhoods in San Carlos to share in the necessary burdens of housing and growth. The rubber hits the road with this council and its deliberations. The questions that the council opposed so far are great, but they only matter if they result in concrete actions that reduce the impacts of this massive development. This project will affect San Carlos and our neighborhood directly for 100 years. We won't get a do-over if it isn't done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vardellis. And Mr. Maginetti, followed by Susie McKee.
Oh, thank you, council, for having this meeting. Oh, thank you, council, for having this meeting. I'll, I'll try to lighten things up, I don't know if I'll succeed. Couple of months ago, I got and changed this penny. It's an Indian-head penny. It was minted in 1887. And it just caught me thinking that my ancestors, who, who lived on this peninsula, could have had this penny. My, my family's been here on the peninsula back before we had a written record here. And I was thinking how much better things are now than my ancestors had to go through. No longer enslaved by missionaries, whose beliefs I do not share. No longer have to have my land seized by a foreign power after a war for gold. No longer denied the right to vote. No longer denied due process by laws written by those who profit from them. No longer have my community torn apart to provide a profit for a railroad monopoly. That was before this coin was minted, I think. Fast forward to now, things are better, methods are different. But it still feels the same, in many ways. We're told, trust me, we've got invisible bollards, we've got buildings with clouds in them, we've got magic trees that block the sound, we've got CGI presentations that show you exactly what it's like to stand next to the Grand Canyon. I, I can tell you, having stood next to the Grand Canyon, that even seeing the CGI on a big screen, is not like being there. I have photographs, I'm old school, this is 35-millimeter, of a project at, on North San Mateo Drive, four stories, two buildings, right next to the railroad tracks. And they look nothing like the CGI presentations. They're not fly-throughs. I invite you to go there, to 888 North San Mateo Drive, if you want to see the real thing, personally and up front. Not everybody in the city can do that, story polls, that's probably a good idea. I joked with some of you that, that sometimes I think you think it's all about you. If you think it's you, you just proved my point. But today, it is all about you. It's all about your character, and it's all about your values. It's about the choices you make, the judgment, and your ability to see through the half-truths, the creative accounting, and the rationalization to putting luxury housing on public land.
Could you wrap it up, I'm sorry?
So, this election, some of you will, will be judged, and I hope that you will make the right choice for our community, and not just for a real estate profit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You can keep the coin.
Susie McKee, followed by Jason Mansfield.
Hello, city council members. I'm a bit of a broken record, but that's okay. So, one of my main concerns is the noise, the fact that there's, it's already pretty noisy. It's going to be noisier, certainly for the people that are right next to it. I'm close enough, it's going to be noisier for our side. Old County's going to be used to get to parking, I think Old County's going to become kind of like, it is at Ralston. It's going to be, people are going to use that to come around the corner, so they have to turn left into the parking on the north side, most likely. Of course, that'll make Holly even worse. Actually, I did look at some of the developments, this last, since last seeing you, sort of by accident, I came upon a couple of them. The one in San Mateo, I've seen all along, but the one in Redwood City, and there's one in, off of San Antonio Road, that kind of shocked me, because they're, they're so monolithic, from my standpoint. I'm not saying that that's exactly the same, but they are a very monolithic feeling. And they tried to do things, they have lights on the one in San Antonio Road, different colored lights and whatnot, but it's still very monolithic. Holly Street will be even more congested, and we don't forget, we have the hospital or medical center coming in any minute. Again, the, the specter of high-speed rail, where on earth is that? I still say move it south. That's going to be my, move it south somehow, I know it's not that wide, but there's a way. If there's a will, there's a way. And that would solve the problems. And I like the idea of a balloon thing, you could take one of those kitty houses that they have by the pumpkin patch, and spread it out, I mean, something like that, that you could spread out, to just get a sense of the height. Doesn't have to, I mean, I think that rail cars or something like that would be a little too dangerous. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McKee. Jason Mansfield, followed by Ben Fuller.
Thank you, mayor and council members. I'm Jason Mansfield, 21 Pine. And I'm going to speak from a person who is on the General Plan Advisory Committee, talk about, a little bit about that. I brought the housing element with me, I'm sure you all boned up on your housing element the past few days. The historic population in San Carlos, over the past 25 years, has increased by 3,400 people. That's their data there. If, maybe in the next 25 years, maybe we get another 3,400 people. And somebody mentioned the lifespan of this project may be 100 years, so projected out halfway, 50 years to 265, 9,800 people. Where are these people going to live? We figured that out, sort of. But A-BAG also says, we should think about it as a community, a whole peninsula, and our regional housing needs allocation, we talked about that a little bit earlier, 599 people we need to house by 2014. San Carlo, we, we looked at the available units built and projected, and we came up with 501, close. And that was assuming 281 people at the Transit Village. All the available housing, based on the zoning in our general plan areas, was 1,336. That's a pretty far cry from 3,400 people. Definitely, what was it, 6,800 or something? Housing goal number three, encourage housing development located close to transit, downtown and along El Camino, with high-quality, higher-density multifamily housing. What's the alternative? Goal number four, promote the development of second units to increase housing opportunities. How are we going to house all these people? What's the most cost-effective way? Cheaper housing on the east side, second units. How is that going to affect traffic? Do you want second units next to all of your neighbors? And in your neighborhood? I think I prefer a more dense alternative, along El Camino, next to the transit station, where people can walk to the train. And yes, this is a big project, it's a massive project, and I think I'd prefer to see it bigger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Ben Fuller, followed by David Fish.
Clearly said by a guy who doesn't live in our neighborhood. So, I want, I want to talk about some of the things I heard today from our council members. I've been taking a little bit of a different tact, which is wanting to work with each of you, and trust our elected officials to the degree we can. We always have the hammer, we can always do a referendum, but I want to give you guys a chance to, because it is about character, as one of our board members said. I want to give you guys a chance to do the right thing. Now, one thing that's really troubling to me is the manipulation of statistics. So, I asked one of our city staff what the actual square footage of this development is, it's 423,000 square feet, as originally anticipated, that was reduced 34,000 square feet. So all you ever hear is about the 34,000? Well, you know, I own 10 shares of Google stock, and I own 3 million shares of my next-door neighbor Ray's landscaping company, which would you rather have? I mean, the, the numerical comparison is only relative, relevant in relationship to the actual size of the complex, 423,000 square feet. So, I do think that Mr. Grocott, Councilman Grocott, had a great idea to put up story polls, or something that can show us the actual impact of this, and I was extremely heartened to hear Councilman Clapper and Collins support that notion, as well as Olbert. I was also really excited to see an economic analysis that I believed. I'm in stocks. I'm always looking at the rates of return to these different investments, and to see Councilman Olbert break it down economically was really interesting to me, and I finally believed something that I was hearing, because what's been happening is, all the information we're getting is coming from the same guys who are going to profit. And that's, that's sort of the corruption of the process. And it's not that I don't like all the guys involved, I like the legacy guys, and the Samtrans guys, and all the people involved. It's just, I don't believe what I'm hearing. So, I want to go back to one last point, you can't dump it all on us. We're going to, if, if this thing gets passed this way, we're going to defeat it. It's got to be done right. So, and then I want to go back to the process, and here's why it's so incumbent upon you guys to get it right. It's about process. We've been told, before the EIR, it's not the time to talk about the size of the building. Then there was the EIR. It's not the time, this was about the, the environmental impacts of the project, it wasn't about the size. Then there was the HSR. It's still not the time to talk about how HSR is going to impact this project. And then there were the trees, and I remember Mark Simon saying, whoa, we're going to do our best to get some trees in, but it's not the time to talk about trees. That's going to be in the future. Then I heard story polls, maybe it's not the time to do story polls, but I think it is. And even the planning commission said, you know what, it's not the time, we don't really have the power to do anything.
Mr. Fuller, could you wrap it up, please?
So I'll go back to, take your time, now is the time. And keep in mind that if, if it's not done right, then you guys are all elected, we love all you guys, and we're trusting in you to do this correctly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Fuller. David Fish, followed by Hernan Rivera.
Hello. What's the appropriate way for me to introduce myself to you, when I come up here? Just say hello? You already know who I am? All right, I live on the east side. I'm not going to regurgitate things you've heard over and over, to some extent. I'm really baffled, though, that we seem to have this overriding need, by some or all, to have the vote on this thing before maybe people change seats. Did George W. end the war on terror before he left? And like people have said, it needs to be done right, there's no timeline, we've been working on this thing for years, so why hustle it through now? I know there's more important things involved in views, but let me go back to, October 18th, we had a full moon, the night of 17th, probably. I got up, what I normally do, early in the morning, went to the kitchen, looked out the window, saw the hill line, and it was this beautiful, bright, full moon at about 6:00 in the morning, just gorgeous. And then what slowly came and made it fade away was my imagination, buildings, three, four years of construction, pounding. Put in the big person, just like they had to do down for PAMF. The traffic of the people, the construction, the things left in the road, my flat tires. And then when this is all done, I had this beautiful image of all these buildings. I tried to think, what would they look like? Well, I remember being in South San Francisco, in El Camino, by Kaiser Permanente, there's that massive project, I know people that have lived in there. Granted, it's not quite the same, it's a bit larger, but most of those buildings are three, I don't think they're four stories, and they're just overwhelming. So then, my mind wandered on to 1,001 Laurel Street, which to me should be an El Camino address, but I'm different. And I'm looking inside these windows, there's nothing in there. And I kind of remember a past mayor saying he didn't want to have another 1,001 Laurel Street on our hands. But if you rush it through, that may be what we're going to have. What makes it so different that we're going to have retail filled there, than we don't, as more so than we have in 1,001? Anyways, this is more kind of a heartfelt thing, an emotional thing, but this is not Hollywood, this is not a field of dreams, this is not a baseball field. Just because they're going to build it, doesn't mean they're going to come. Do we really expect residences to come in here and pay something like 40K a year to live in this place, on top of the tracks, on top of El Camino, business to come in, retail to be there? It just seems a bit absurd to me. It's, I don't know, seems pie in the sky. It's all I've got.
Thank you for your comments. Hernan Rivera, followed by Tim Hilborn.
Good evening. Hernan Rivera, 1036 Sylvan Drive. Been a resident of San Carlos for 20 years plus. And I've enjoyed my, the quality of life in this town, ever since I moved here. After having attended so many meetings and seen all kinds of people, not ones where we invited for an ice cream social, I don't know, I understand, I know there's a lot of money that went through, developing and doing all kinds of things, trying to provide information that has been, from what I understand, Mr. Grocott's analyses of the plans and proposals have been full of mistakes, and errors, omissions, and things like that. I think what I'm asking is for you to please follow the money, to find out who really benefits out of this project. Is San Carlos, and are the residents of San Carlos benefiting at all? And are we also being fair about this? Because I don't see too many people from the west part of San Carlos. They are also being impacted. They are also having to come through town, through Holly Street or Britton, in order to make it up to the hill, or shopping in Laurel Street and everything else. I work in San Jose, and every morning I have to go on 101 South. You know, by 7:00, that's a gridlock already. And by, by 4:00 in the afternoon, forget it. If you haven't been on that road, you know what I'm talking about. Same thing happens when you're on 280, coming down on Edgewood Road, and coming, trying to go through town, go to San Carlos, town, and, and even going to Redwood Shores. Because there are a lot of people that work in Palo Alto who live in Redwood Shores. They also impact San Carlos. Now we're going to have a construction that's going to be for two or three years, and we don't really have an idea for how big this project is going to be. We have all of these snake oil graphics, that, that really don't tell us the true story. It's, it's really something that, it's kind of scary. And in my opinion, government, since Sarbanes-Odsley Act, we need to be accountable, and we need to be transparent. And I think that's what I'm asking. And I, I recognize a few names, I have them on my lawn, and I hope to, and I hope to see them again the next round. November 50 is coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bureau. Tim Hilborn, followed by Nancy Zebergs, Zeburg, sorry.
Tim Hilborn, 1052 Sylvan Drive. First of all, thanks for taking the time on all this. I know it's been a long process, and it's still going to be a long process. I just want to go through my required conditions of approval for this project. First of all, I'm requesting that the height limits be at 36 feet maximum, doesn't mean it can't be more of a minimum, on Buildings 1, 2, 3, and 8. Break up the buildings with a minimum of 30% to 70% ratio of open space, view corridors, or structures to mitigate noise and views. All noise mitigations from the EIR are not feasible anymore. You were going to put trees there, we were told that trees were going to mitigate the impact, they don't. They were going to put some kind of sound-absorbing materials on the walls, they don't exist. What else do we have, except to lower the buildings? Set up story polls for proposed developments, so community and city can truly see what the true impacts of the height and shadowing will be. If you guys pay me, I'll go to A1 Rentals this week, and pick up the cranes, bring them over, set them up, and put up the orange netting for you guys. Okay, you just tell me where to put them, I'll be happy to do that. It'll take me a couple days to do. Reduction in units to 245, that's a maximum, you could go down further than that. The city is pushing to implement over 130% of A-BAG mandated housing for San Carlos through 2022 on the small parcel. There will be, there will be much more opportunity for housing, including Wheeler Plaza. The gentleman that got up here earlier does not have his numbers right. He was talking about 500 required units, or 500 or more required units through 2022. He was talking about 500 required units, or 500 or more required units through 2022. He didn't break that up into luxury, moderate, below moderate. The 500 and some odd that he's talking about goes from low income all the way up. I wish he would have brought that up. Full-funded park program and free stickers for placards and 99 years for up to four cars per household, funded by the city. Confirmation for each tree location showing the exact location of utilities, a definite placement of where trees will be allowed on the berm in relation to Caltrain electrification before you guys, the city council approves it. No removal of planning commission mitigations or recommendations, including shuttles and truck supply load-in on the east side. More trees south of Holly. Expanded park and park money and city commitment to L'Oriola Park expansion. We're the ones that are gonna take the brunt of this. A finalized traffic improvement and mitigation study and plan for both the San Carlos Transit Village development and cumulative impacts in place prior to groundbreaking. Both Samtrans and Legacy, and this is the big one, both Samtrans and Legacy will not be paying one cent of property tax on this development. Samtrans does not pay property tax right now. The developer will not be paying property tax. They will be paying a possessory interest tax at a fraction of what would be paid had the development been on a private parcel. The developer will not be held to pay the same increase, such as a 25% sewer rate increase that all city residents are currently experiencing.
Mr. Hilborn, could you please wrap it up?
This is unacceptable for the largest proposed development the city has ever seen. Residents should be up in arms about this, but both Samtrans and city staff have been successful at keeping this fact from the public. We have already lost millions of dollars in RDA funds guaranteed. Now, the city seems to accept that $150,000 annual revenue along with mandated fees will suffice. I'm demanding that the council look into this and find the differences in funding had this development been proposed on private parcel property subject to property tax. I don't believe city staff or Samtrans in what they have told the planning commission or city council regarding this. I've never received a straight answer from Mr. Hilborn or Brian Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Hilborn! I'm not listening anymore, because it's past four minutes now. You aren't polite to the other people. I asked you to hold it to three minutes.
I have one more paragraph.
Sorry, next time. I told everyone, we're trying to get everybody in here. Always has to be one. Nancy Zeburg, followed by Ron Fusaro.
Could I turn my time over to Mr. Hilborn?
No, ma'am. You want to speak? He'll have his opportunity at least two more times.
Nancy Zeburgs lived on Springfield Drive for over 40 years. One of the questions that came up to me as I was listening to other speakers, are there other residential areas, other residential buildings, that are directly against the railroad tracks in which people pay the kind of rental fees that are anticipated by this building? I think that would be important information to know, because the fees that they're expecting to charge seem very high. Addressing them directly is, and trying to get a visualization of the size of these buildings, if it's not possible to do the polls or anything else, could they at least spray the lines of the outlines of exactly where the buildings are gonna be so that we can see what's gonna be open for spacing and so forth, where driveways are, to get at least a visualization of how much of that is gonna be totally blocked by buildings going in there? Might help a little bit. It's not gonna do what you were looking for, Mr. Grocott, but it might help. And on the 3D presentation, is it possible to incorporate what the area really looks like around it? Because in looking at what the village looks like, and you show blank buildings across the street, doesn't show us what it's going to look like incorporated with what the rest of the area looks like. And I know with Google Earth or whatever, there are other, there's other things out there that you could perhaps bring into that presentation to make it more realistic. But, aside from all the concerns expressed strongly and repeatedly by all of us on the greater east side, and my Holly Street and Old County Street concerns, the elimination, I've written different things, and I'm trying to follow track of what I've done here, the I'm concerned for the overall impact on the El Camino traffic. The elimination of one of the northbound right-turn lanes and one of the southbound left-turn lanes is, there's gonna be adding traffic to the southbound traffic by those needing to make a U-turn to get into their new housing. And if we just look at what happens at Ralston Avenue with their one right-hand turn lane to head towards the freeway, and their one left-hand southbound lane, it's murder. And we're asking that traffic to back up through San Carlos and all of the emissions and all of the other stuff that's adding to what we see. Have any of you ever been stopped on Old County Road when a train has been in that station? And when the train takes off from that station? And you see the emissions going into the air, and you think about the children, and you go, and we want more traffic backed up into our area to add that much more emission to it? It doesn't make sense. Mr. Grocott, when you said that this is huge, it is huge. Is it too huge for this particular spot?
Nancy Zeburg, could you wrap it up?
I think it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. The last card that I have is Ron Fusaro. But I have more cards. Mr. Fusaro, not here?
I think, I'm Rita Fusaro. I don't know.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
Didn't see, didn't have it. Got it?
Actually, I'm brand-new to San Carlos. I closed on September 17th, and I moved into Holly Street. And I moved up here from Palo Alto. And I moved away from Palo Alto because of the congestion that was going on, and because, as Susie McKee mentioned, these monolithic things that have gone up that just are, they're, they don't, they don't fit in to the neighborhood. And they bring nothing to the neighborhood. They don't bring pride of ownership. They're all rentals. They're just, just brings an influx of people. I've seen my small, little farmer's market that was open daily as a market just be, it has to close up. It can't even support the amount of people that are coming into it. I do, I did move here because city of good living, quality of life. I looked at that little strip in front of the train station for many years, and when I moved here, I thought, that's where I'm gonna run. I get emotional because I think, who thought this is a good idea to put this monstrosity in the middle of two neighborhoods? I mean, you're not putting it somewhere on the side. You are actually putting it in the middle of two neighborhoods. I moved on to Holly Street. That's a community there. There are people, I know eight of my neighbors in less than a month. Okay? So, I mean, I could go on and on. I'm sorry for being disruptive out here with applause and everything, but that wasn't rudeness, that was passion. And I think these people are passionate about their neighborhood, as I was when I moved in there. This doesn't fit. I mean, the whole look of it, it's not like San Jose, next 11 exits. This is San Carlos, one exit. You got one exit, it's Holly Street. This is your entrance into your city. Is that what you want to see? I don't. Anyways, on the study of 3D, I also am a design engineer, and I've worked a lot with 3D models and rendering, and I take things from concept all the way to production. And like Mr. Grocott said, what you start out in concept is never what it looks like at the end, never. And this is why you make pilot builds and, or prototypes, and then you go to pilot, and then you go to production. You don't get those stages here. This is, you just go straight from concept to production. And I just beg of the team involved with passing this to use the old carpenter's rule of measure twice and cut once, and make sure that you, I hear 1001 Laurel Street is a mistake? Don't make another mistake. This is a big one.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Next card I have is Brett Stevenson.
Good evening. I reside at 976 Holly Street, and I share a lot of the same feelings that the prior speaker had. My wife and I grew up in San Mateo, and nine years ago, this was the community that we wanted to raise our children in. I don't want to be redundant with what a lot of the speakers have already said tonight, but the small-town feel, the community, the schools, the parks, the community, the type of families that reside in San Carlos, it's just where we call home. We knew when we moved on to Holly Street that we would forfeit that vision of having our children play in the front yard. I'm not sure how this is gonna improve the quality of life for my family. The congestion has been talked about over and over ad nauseam, about how bad Holly is, and with Pampf opening, and if this is approved, it's gonna be ridiculous. And, Mayor, I just want to say I'm appalled by your behavior tonight. I pay a lot in property taxes. I'm a good citizen. I take care of my house. I contribute to the foundation, SCAF. I'm in education. I've known Tim Hilborn for 17 years. I've never heard anyone talk to him that way. These people care. Their enthusiasm, their emotions, their feeling, we're gonna be affected by this on the east side. And to admonish them in the way that you did, if that's reflective of our leadership, I'm extremely disappointed. You've shown your cards tonight. People are talking about story polls and slowing the process down. Because in 20 years, you're right, if it's reflective that process was honored, we took our time, we really examined the scope of this project, no one can disagree with process running its course. But again, I'm trying to be respectful here tonight. I respect all of your time for community service, but I hope when I come to future meetings, you don't act like this ever again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Fuller, you're gonna, you said you wanted to speak for the G-E-S-C, whatever it is. G-E-S-C, I never can get that right. I always go GSC.
Hey, listen, I understand how things can get heated, and I don't want to admonish anyone. I know that everyone's working really hard, and you guys have some very difficult decisions to make, and unfortunately, you know, we had to kick the can down the road for so long because of this broken process. And so, you know, do I wish that we'd talked with the developers and not had three years of not discussing it because they weren't taking our meetings? Yes. But then we started meeting, and then we went to the mediations, and some things were, we have made some progress in this. I don't want to make it sound like we've made no progress throughout the history of this project. And I know there's a lot of people who are working hard on the other side, and I don't want to take anything away from the architects, or Jeff, or Mark, or Brian, or all these people. I mean, we're really trying to figure out a way to make this all work together, and we gotta come together, because the other options of referendums, or, you know, building something that nobody likes, these are not good options. And so, you know, I want to just say to the developers, we had put some requests out initially that, I know you guys probably think it's like a moving goal line, and that we're not gonna honor what we say, and that we'll say one thing, and then we'll ask for more, and we'll ask for more. We don't want that either. We want to, we want to come to an agreement that's gonna work for everyone. Unfortunately, now, we're at this point where it's on Councilman Clapper, Olbert, Collins, Mayor Grisilli, and Grocott to make the decision, because we haven't been able to work it out. And I would just say to all the people on the team, city staff included, you know, this isn't personal. This is about the future of our lives here in this neighborhood, and it's about maybe taking a little less money, you know, if Councilman Olbert's economic analysis is correct, and there's a 7.69% return, and all you need is 6.5, and we can validate those numbers, go down to 6.5. You know, this is gonna be a great project, if it's done right, that you can use for, you know, as your pilot for many more of these projects where there isn't a neighborhood right across the street. Ultimately, that's our issue, you know. We don't want to have four stories anywhere across from our homes. And we've been saying this for a long time, and maybe if we had just acknowledged that at the beginning, we wouldn't be here right now, but here we are. And so, I don't want to put all the pressure on our city council. I'd love to reopen it up to the developers to come back and say, "Hey, we've thought about a few of these things. I've heard some really creative suggestions from all you guys tonight." I was very enthused to see some of the folks running and some of the folks not running, to put some ideas out there. And let's have some more meetings, you know, let's all calm down. I understand Mayor Grisilli's got to run his meeting, and so I don't want to take a lot of offense at that either. You know, I want to back everyone up. Let's do this together. Let's not rush. Let's not lame-duck it, because we got two meetings during the lame duck after the election. Let's just, let's do it like we said, like Brett Stevenson just said. So, 20 years from now, we went through a process. We're getting there. We're making progress. Let's keep it going.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight on this? Okay, as I said before, we will be having more meetings, and there will be public comment at each meeting, and we will make sure that everyone's heard. That being said, is it the pleasure of the council to move on to other items, or do you still want to ask some more questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't mind moving on to other items, just because there are a couple of things that we need to do before 10:30.
Okay. Is that the consensus?
That's fine with me. I noted where I stopped in my question, so I can...
I want to make sure that Mr. Rubens is just gonna tell me that we are gonna then extend this, is that the word? Or what's the... You're gonna continue the public hearing. Continue this public hearing at the next meeting, which will be November 12th. It's Tuesday, November 12th, not Monday, November 11th. That's a holiday. So, we're gonna be meeting it Tuesday, November 12th.
Better say, is that, is that the one?
All right, we have, I guess the other item on our agenda then would be the two items that we, Mr. Grocott pulled E and F.
Yeah.
From the consent calendar.
So, Mr. Mayor, you take them in order, right?
I'm sorry?
You want me to take them in order?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
To the chair, yes, Mr. Rubelby?
Can we take them out?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sure. Do it.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to go F, deny claim of City Dental Group, please?
So, it's unusual, I'll admit, for a council member to pull one of these off the consent calendar, because typically, something like this, that's a claim, just goes through its process. But it looked to me, when I reviewed this, like it had already been at least taken to ABAG for a first pass, and ABAG was saying no because it had to do with a contractor. I looked at the amount, quite frankly, and I'm looking at a small business, and I'm saying, you know, when I look at this, quite frankly, I just think the city should just pay for this guy's window, and if anybody's picking a lawsuit against somebody else, it ought to be the city against the contractor, not City Dental against the contractor. So, that's why I pulled the item. So, I guess if I was asking for our council to take action on anything, it would be just that we would take action to go ahead and pay this, pay the claim to City Dental for the window that was damaged, and then if we want to, as a city, go after this contractor in small claims court, or whatever the process is, that we do that. But it was our contractor, after all. We hired the contractor. We hired the guy. That's why he was out there, and that's why the window got broken, so.
Uh, Mr. Malpe, I just want to ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Your analysis says the city's tendered the claim to the contractor. So haven't we already submitted the claim to the contractor?
I don't think so. I think...
That's what it says.
Did we hear from staff on that?
Yeah, maybe we could, can we get some clarification?
Can I, can I get the question one more time?
Um, Mr. Grocott said that we should send the bill to the contractor, and your analysis says we, we've sent it to the contractor.
That's not what I said. I said...
Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, yeah, misunderstood.
Well, I heard that, but you, I thought you also said then we should go after the contractor.
Yes, I did.
Why don't we just have the contractor pay the bill? I don't get the difference.
If he would, then we wouldn't have this issue on the dais.
Typically, our process is to reject nearly all claims, even, even when we tender them. And I recognize this, this is, you know, the dollar amount is so small, it's, it, you know, almost makes the discussion silly in nature. However, from a policy standpoint, you can scale this up to a multimillion-dollar claim and have the facts be very similar. As always, denial of a claim does not stop us from discussing the claim with, with the claimant and trying to work it out. You know, this situation is continuing to evolve. In fact, I had a conversation just earlier tonight while the meeting was going on with Rebecca Mendenhall, which provided some new information, which may result in us doing exactly what you described and just paying the claim because there may be a more protracted process with the, with the contractor. And, you know, again, given the dollar amounts, there's some unusual nature. However, this agenda item is only agended for denial, so we'd have to re-agendize it if the council wanted to accept it. We couldn't do that on the fly tonight.
So would it hurt if we just postpone the item for a couple of weeks and see how it resolves itself out, if it does at all?
It, it wouldn't hurt to do that, really, for a couple of weeks. It also wouldn't hurt to reject it. It's not gonna stop the, the process from being worked out and continuing to be worked on by staff, so.
All right.
Just, just remember, the main effect of rejecting the claim in this, in this way, which is why we reject it, is it starts the, the clock for the claimant to file a lawsuit against the city. It's six months from the rejection of the claim. In this case, it probably is not significant to have the, the extra time if that's what the council wants. But that's why we, from a policy standpoint, we recommend all claims be rejected, not because we don't want to try and discuss it with people, but because from a city standpoint, we want to make sure that we take advantage of the, the law on when lawsuits can be filed against the city.
Well, and just to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand all that. I'm just looking at it as a business guy. If I was, you know, City Dental, I've had to shell out the money, obviously, to put in my, in the window. Meanwhile, the city's sitting good, the contractor's sitting good, and I'm being forced to chase after this money and go through this long, protracted process. And at some point, I'm just gonna throw up my hands and say, "Forget it. I'm out $250," or whatever it was. And that, to me, just from a fairness standpoint, doesn't seem quite right.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Couple of things, just, my recollection, I, I understand the argument here, the debate here. My recollection is we've actually done this on a, quite a number of claims of about this magnitude. Trip and fall things, usually on, on sidewalks. And, and I do, I don't like to be hamstrung by precedent, but I do want to be sensitive to that, in, in terms of being fair with everybody. One question I do have, however, is, is it seems to me that if this, particularly if this is a contractor with whom we do repeat business, it seems to me we, we ought to be in a position to insist on a timely response, resolution, what have you. I mean, I imagine we can't insist that he, he accept the claim and pay it, because he has legal rights as well. But it would seem to me that if somebody's dragging their feet, that's, that's, that's a basis to say, "I'm sorry, we're not gonna work with you again." Are we, do we have that flexibility?
We definitely have that flexibility, and we try to build that into all our contract standards upfront. But it certainly informs future performance in working with the city if we're having these kinds of issues with a contractor. That said, based on what I heard tonight, I expect this issue's probably gonna be wrapped up in the next week or two, anyway.
Okay, all right. I, I, as I just think that, that, that's a way of legitimately putting pressure on it, saying, "Hey, we're not telling you have to accept liability if you think you don't, it's, you don't have it, but you have to make a decision one way or another. Don't drag it out."
Well, to carry this along, I'll make a motion that we pass it. I'm probably gonna vote against it, but just the process is, somebody has to make a motion, someone has to second it, and then if we want to discuss it more, we can. So my motion is that we, what is it, deny the claim? Is that...
Deny the claim.
Is that what we're doing? Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
And next item is 5E. Your question?
Correct. On 5E, it's the construction project. Now, I can't find the darn thing. I don't know. Oh, here it is. Is this it? No. But it is asking that we either okay the overage, oh, here, I found it. This thing looks like it could be over budget from what we budgeted before it even gets out the gate. And there was a recommendation here, a second staff recommendation alternative, was to go ahead with the RFP, but before we actually move forward with the project, let's have a look at where the bids come in and see what we might want to do. Either go forward fully or pare it back a little bit to get it back under, within budget. And that's what I was hoping the council would go for, is the one where we have still a handle on the reins a little bit, if you will.
Through, through the chair, I was actually going to ask to pull this item before Councilmember Grocott had asked, asked to do so. I know that I saw the staff report that staff had done apparently a fair amount of value engineering to get it down to being $334,000 over the budget. But that's still such a significant increase. I actually would like to sort of send it back to say, "What, what does it look like if we actually target being on budget? What are we losing? What could you, what could you do to make it happen?"
Well, I think one of the things that I'd like to point out is, what we're trying to do is honor the process that the council has been pushing for in the last year, which is to bring projects in on budget by doing our homework upfront. And that's really what's happening here, is we're, you know, as we're digging more and more into this project, it, it's going from just a conceptual number that's a few people in a room trying to, you know, just start with what we think it might cost, to working with industry professionals and digging into the exact details associated with the project before we ever go out to bid, so that we can actually bring a project in on budget. Now, we can certainly go back and, and try to look at the components again, but I can tell you, we've already done that. And we've done it in anticipation of knowing that we'd have council members who weren't pleased in having this conversation tonight. But our feeling is that we do, we do a better job honoring what it is the council's been asking us to do by having this conversation now than having the conversation after the contract's been awarded and we're in construction and, and we're coming back saying we don't have enough money. So we're giving you the opportunity to see our best guess before we even send this thing out the door. And again, we can go back and look at it, but we have, you know, we've done that, and I, and I've pushed very hard as a city manager on this project, knowing full well that I'd have council members that weren't pleased in seeing this item and the dollar amounts associated with it. So I can tell you, I wasn't pleased. And, and, you know, so the engineers associated with it have really tried to cut all the fat out of this thing. But as you know, if you've, you know, when you've done remodel projects, there's just certain realities that we're looking at, you know, moving costs and moving these people and, and all these kinds of things. It's not a particularly sexy project, this project, so it doesn't have a lot of fat to be trimmed.
Mr. Malpe, let me give you an example, another option here. So if we take number, Mr. Grocott wanted option number two.
Yeah.
If we do number two, and it comes back and, and the, and the budget is, or the bid is less, well, then we're a little bit ahead. We may still be over, but there'll be a discussion, but maybe we'll go with it. If it's the same or more, would we then say, "Okay, we're not gonna take, we're not gonna do this, this, and this. We're only gonna do certain things," or is that gonna be a problem?
Um, it's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a problem for the project. And you may ultimately, I mean, if we were going to do, if we're gonna make changes to this project, they're gonna start to be significant, like we're just gonna do the ceiling work, the fire sprinklers and those kinds of things. But it's not gonna resemble the, the project as it was envisioned. It's gonna become a new project. And that could very well happen. And we're gonna have to face the realities that we're pushing up against the limit of, of, you know, what is reasonable in terms of having anticipated spending on this project. But we'd rather bring this to your attention now while you still have the opportunity to say, "No, we don't want to spend another $300,000 on this project." Or, you know, or say, "Go out to bid. We recognize, you know, we won't be surprised if it comes back and, and it's much higher than we have budgeted."
Go ahead, Mr. Grocott.
Yeah. The, the reason I would like to do number two is, in, in some sense, to protect the staff so that it doesn't, we don't end up, no disrespect to the library project, but the library project got going and then they had to come back and say, "It's over budget and we need more money." And that's a little embarrassing for the staff. Whereas if we do this ahead of time, it still might be over budget, but we own it, you know? We, we looked at it, we took the, the look at the bids, we know we're over budget, we might not even take anything out of it, but now we own it because we made the decision as opposed to, we do number one and, you know, we, the thing goes way over and, you know, we end up in trouble. I would just, I just feel like we gained more ownership of it with number two.
Mr. Olbert?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Malpe, just a couple of quick questions. Capital Projects Fund 0025, what is that?
Just for a second? Yeah. Can you, your motion to extend the meeting past 10:30?
Uh, my move, we extend it to 10:35.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Sorry.
Fun 25, what, what, I, I have to admit, I'm not familiar with that one. I don't remember offhand.
I, I missed the first part of your question because I was looking at the clock.
Where, where staff is proposing to take money out of that, that item, what does that do? What does that mean?
Um, well, let's see.
Is it some other project that's gonna get cut? Is that, is that a general fund of some kind?
Fund 25 is, and there's no balance in here, at least as I can see, Fund 25 is the general fund capital budget fund for the city. So it's a, you know, it looks out at this point, you know, five to 10 years in terms of projects. So there typically could be some delay in projects. However, we know, basically, one of the sources of funding that we use for Fund 25 is surplus savings from one year to the next. We typically generate some savings in the budget, so the, the fund tends to, the revenue tends to grow in Fund 25 more than what the budget would anticipate for the next year and helps pick up the, the cost of that. In addition, it's more typical that projects that are envisioned in years two or three may slip back to years four or five just based on the amount of lead time to do the preliminary engineering, design work, that kind of thing. And that's usually the delta where this money's coming from for projects that are riper and moving forward.
Um, my, my last question is that, that the 1.2 million, again, is the 300 and some odd thousand dollars over what was initially budgeted, but the 1.2 million is already the result of a whole bunch of value engineering work that was done. So I'm going to broadly speculate here, I didn't see the number here, that the original number, when it first came in, was probably close to almost double what the budget was. I may be wrong about that. I'm just extrapolating. And, and I guess the, the question I'm raising is, you're absolutely correct that at the very early stages of a project, there's an awful lot of Kentucky windage that has to get applied to it. For what it's worth, if it really was, we're off by a factor of almost two, that just seems like a fair amount. And, and I hope that staff will revisit that if, if it's that significant. Staff will revisit the process to see what it is that we could do better in the future. And are there other things, you know, are there other things out there that, that we maybe want to give the council a heads-up update, saying, "Hey, this hasn't come to you yet, but when it comes, it's gonna be bigger than what we had in the budget," because we've gone back and looked at it and said, "Oops, that one's off, too."
Okay, so if we make a motion, and we'll see where we're going on one of this?
So I'd move that we adopt a resolution only approving the plans and specifications and advertising for bids, as recommended in number two.
It's been moved and seconded. It's option number two. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.